All right. Thank you, everyone, and welcome to the Neshoba Regional Regular School Committee Meeting of May 9th, 2018. Calling the meeting to order at 6:00. Do we have citizens' comments tonight? Anyone who would like to speak, share their thoughts? No? Okay. I've got several updates, and so I think that these are late-breaking updates. So I think that we're going to go longer than the five minutes on the agenda. I'm just warning everybody at the table that this is gonna... We're gonna... I'm probably gonna throw the agenda off a little bit here. Okay. So the first, the easiest one to get through is June 20th. Goal-setting session is tentative right now until we get our new committee seated, but that's the night that we have a regular school committee meeting scheduled. We're gonna extend the time of the school committee meeting and move it off-site the way we did last year for our goal-setting session. So get ready for some really strong conversation, and we'll make sure, once we have that location finalized and the timing, that it's appropriately noticed. We had annual town meeting in all three of our towns on Monday night. I think on behalf of everyone sitting at this table right now, we genuinely appreciate the fact that all three of our towns approved the FY19 Neshoba Regional School District budget. In addition, there was an article... There were a couple of articles for each town specifically for the buildings within their towns, but there was also an article on there for the track and field stabilization fund. All three towns passed that. However, in Bolton, there was a little bit more discussion. And the questions that... There were a lot of questions, not about what the stabilization fund would do, but they were related to the stabilization fund as far as what happened with the track and field. There was some information that people were looking for. Brooke and I, Superintendent Clenchey and I, sorry, weren't prepared for those questions, but since they were related, we did what we could, and I promised that I would get back to the community with some detailed information, and we wrote down the questions. So I will... I have put together a question-and-answer document that will hopefully answer a lot of the questions that people had in that room. And since it's Bolton folks that asked it, but it has application across all three towns, I'm gonna make this available once we get... I'm just... I need the administration to finalize the numbers that are in there because they did incredible work, incredible investigation as to what happened, when did it happen, where did the money go for the receipts that we get from the games at the high school, and how is the bond being paid for? There were a lot of questions, so I'm gonna tell you what the questions were, and then we'll make sure tomorrow that we get this out to our local papers, and we'll get it on the district website. And there's also supporting documentation that Alita... Thank you, thank you, Alita. ...was able to help locate that references back to some of this. Pat Maroney, our business manager and Superintendent Clenchey did a ton of digging to try to answer some of this. And I kind of feel like, at this point, there were questions that I had because I wasn't on the school committee at the time, but we needed to find out what really went down. So here, the question is, first of all, the track and field effort was undertaken... I think it was completed in 2013 or 2014. Is that 2013 or 2014?
No. The track and field, was it not finished in 2012? I believe it was 2012.
Yeah, fiscal year.
Okay. So you can go back there if these numbers are correct. And there was a lot of discussion about it. The towns approved it. It was a $1.28 million project. And there were a lot of things that were talked about at that point. Some of the questions that I received from Bolton that we're gonna share with all of the community is, "In 2013, we were told the track and field would be self-funding through gate receipts and fundraising efforts to help offset the cost each year. Has that happened?" We've got the data that supports what did happen. "What's the annual cost of the track and field?" That information is in there. "Are gate receipts used to offset the cost of maintenance and debt from the bond that was taken out to pay for the project itself?" Gate receipts are the admission fees that are collected by the spectators that come to the events. Are gate receipts used? If gate receipts hadn't been used to offset the cost of the track and field, what have they been used for? And why do we need... I need to get this one in there. Why did we need the track and field stabilization fund? Because I think it's important that people understand what we're trying to do here. In a nutshell, what we're trying to do is to strategically plan for a very large expense that will be coming eventually versus kind of one year we go to annual town meeting and the school district's asking for $500,000 to redo the carpet of the track and... of the field. And then the last question I think we heard was, "Where will the money come from, from the track and field stabilization fund?" So we will make sure that information is provided, again, on the district website, and I hope that this answers some of the questions. If you have further questions, once this is... Once our collective document is posted on the site and given to the press, please contact the superintendent's office, as I think they're the right people to answer questions about the details. But, to be fair, I think that this was a really good exercise because there's been a lot of confusion and frustration about the track and field project, and I think we finally were able to dig down to what happened. Does anybody have any comments? Questions? Neil, please.
So I appreciate that because through the forensic audit and everything having to do with that, none of that history had come forward or was able to be located at that point in time. So the stuff you guys were able to find is, I think, the town will be very interested in it.
Absolutely. So thank you for your efforts on digging all that out. All right. The last thing on my report is to say thank you and goodbye to Neil Darcy, our Bolton representative, who has been with us for three years and done some incredible heavy lifting and chairing the Budget and Warrant Subcommittee through the forensic audit findings and implementing processes and procedures along with the administration. Clearly, the administration are the folks that are doing the work, but the work that Neil has done, we thank you so, so much. I am personally gonna miss you. And Mr. Jones, I know you've got reelection coming on Tuesday.
Tuesday.
So we wish you all the best with that. But Neil, on behalf of your peers and lived through the last three years and still being alive, best of luck to you.
Thank you very much.
Aww. What a good guy. Thanks for everything.
Absolutely.
We're gonna miss you.
Thank you.
All right. Everybody?
I can dial in every once in a while.
You could. It's a public meeting.
Public plans or something like that.
Yeah, you could. It's a public meeting, and we invite that.
Sure.
All right. So I think that's all of my report, and we have Ms. Isabel, who's winding down her own here.
Yeah. Coming to a close.
Yeah.
So I'll start with the athletic report. Our athletic teams are very happy the sun has been out and we're able to play games with beautiful weather. It is going to be a very busy month of May as we try to get regularly scheduled games and make up games played. We have some teams with three to four games a week just trying to get them on during their regular season. The Unified Track team finished their season undefeated with a 4-0 record. The team will compete in the Central Sectional Meet on May 21st at Asabet Valley High School. The Boys' Track Team improved to 2-2, while the Girls improved to 3-1 with wins over Pittsburgh yesterday. The teams will compete in the District Class Meet this weekend. The Boys' Tennis Team is 4-4, and the Girls are 5-2, and they play Marlboro on Friday. The Girls' Lacrosse Team is 4-6 and will host Shepherd Hill tomorrow. The Boys' Team improved to 7-4 and hosts North Middlesex tomorrow night. The Varsity Teams are hosting a youth night for our doubleheader. The Softball Team is improving each game. The team is 4-6 and had a big 5-0 win over Lemonster over the weekend at home, and they're traveling to Lemonster today for another game. Softball hosts Algonquin on Saturday and will celebrate Senior Day. The Baseball Team has improved to 7-3 overall with a big win over Hudson this week. The Boys host Algonquin on Saturday for their Little League Day at Neshoba. From the bands, the Florence Sawyer Jazz Band is performing at the NJA Junior Central District Festival today at Trotter Middle School in South Borough. On Friday, May 11th, the high school is presenting its instrumental pops concert at 7:00 p.m. in the NRHS auditorium. The concert will feature both intermediate and advanced jazz bands as well as the concert band. The concert will also recognize seniors throughout the night and will feature a few senior solos. This year, there are 18 seniors graduating from the instrumental program. All 18 have been four-year members of the ensembles. Also, on Friday, May 11th, Hale Middle School's 7th and 8th Grade Band will be traveling to Western Mass to compete in the Music in the Parks competition. Next Friday, May 18th, the high school will be presenting its Coral Pops concert at 7:00 p.m. in the NRHS auditorium. The concert will feature all of our choirs as well as some senior solos throughout the night. There are 17 seniors graduating from the vocal program, and all 17 seniors have been four-year members of the choir program. On Monday, May 21st, the high school will be hosting the first-ever Neshoba Sings Night. This is a district-wide event that will feature all choir groups from across the district and end with all of the choir students singing together on the stage. We are hoping that all 400-plus choir students are able to attend. The concert will begin at 6:30 p.m. in the high school auditorium. I know Ms. Gunnar Stur, the choir director, is very excited about this, if not a little bit overwhelmed. In academic news, AP testing started this week and will continue into next week, and MCAS testing has continued in the elementary and middle school.
Good. Any questions for Isabel? Neil? Are you ready for graduation?
Yes.
And what are you doing after graduation?
I'm going to University of South Carolina.
Congratulations. You can say hi to Neil while you're down there.
Yeah.
It's even hotter down there.
Okay. I'm gonna turn it over to the superintendent for her to provide updates on her report.
Yep. Great. Thank you. So the first one is with regards to the Asabet Valley Collaborative. That's a collaborative that we belong to, and last year, you'll remember that we had to take a vote to accept Auburn into the collaborative. This year, we just received a letter from Jeff Riley, our new Commissioner of Education, the other day, saying that on April 12th, he's approved the amendment which officially recognizes that they are now a member of... formal member of the Aspet Collaborative. Communication survey. You'll recall that one of my goals last year was taking... the notion of taking a look at communication across the district this year with the intent of mapping out plans for next year. We... I know that I've already reported out that we formed two focus groups and that Jay Stewart had come in and met with those groups, and from there, we created additional questions, and then those questions have now been sent out in the form of survey to both parents. Parents today, and the staff went out yesterday. And then we'll take all of that data in, and I had a couple of parents respond back today very positively. It was really nice. So just note, that's ongoing, and it's out there right now. I would also like to comment on the town meetings, too, and I know I tweeted out earlier today how much... I think yesterday, actually, how much we appreciated the efforts of our everybody involved with the budget process, the town meetings. I want to give a special shout-out to Rob Freeswick and Jim Brigham for their work in Stowe this year, and Mark for kind of stopping that one particular article that was set to be passed over, and I know they kind of stopped it and gave Rob and Jim a chance to expand on their thinking on it, and it passed, and that was huge. So we're really, really delighted. That was the first town meeting ever for either Rob or to Jim to have ever attended. So that was a big deal. So thank you so much. To those folks who were in the audiences, we thank you so much for your continued support. I tweeted out something to the effect that, you know, their support is a result... That's why we do so well. It's a direct reflection, the community's support and the success of Neshoba Regional School District. MCAS update, exactly as Isabel just said. We're wrapping up our MCAS process. It was another successful implementation this year of the CBA, which is the computer-based assessment piece. This year, we were still doing a little bit of paper and a little bit of computer. Next year, it will switch again. So hats off to everyone because our IT department just literally moves into the buildings to help provide support. I know that our teaching and learning units worked really diligently with our principals and the teachers. The students did a fantastic job. There's a lot that goes into the new MCAS, and I'm just... I'm delighted with how it wound its way up. So just thrilled with that. Staffing, this is, of course, this is the time of year now. Now that the budget's passed, we have to implement it. We have to make sure that it works, and so we're doing all the staffing changes. Any of the reductions that we've said that we're making basically are in the process or have been wrapped up. So I think we're in a really good place for our staffing right now. I know I sent an email out to you earlier, just kind of letting you know that I'll kind of ship out some of the key, particularly administrative, changes if there are any. I do want to mention, too, that Cindy Maxfield had tendered her letter of resignation for retirement, so we want to thank Cindy for all of her years of work with our pre-K and K program. Did a wonderful, wonderful job. She's left big shoes to fill, so special thank you to her. Other than that, the staffing will just continue. We have a... We've set the date of May 15th to try to have everything wrapped up, and that's really primarily so that our staff doesn't feel like, "Oh, my goodness, is there gonna be something else that's after this?" No. By 15th, we're anticipating that we've got it all wrapped up. So that's... It's an arbitrary number. We chose it, and that's the goal that we're working towards. The FY19 budget, I just want to allude to that quickly. Again, remember that we said that we had some areas that were not identified in terms of reductions. So we continually meet right now as a business office staff and the superintendent's office staff. We generally bring Amberine to that discussion as well, and anybody else that we need to talk that through and make sure that we are in a very good place. Right now, it feels like we're in a very solid place for moving forward with that budget. So it's one thing to get it passed or create it, to get it passed. It's another thing to implement it. So we're in that phase right now. Superintendent meetings, this is something I had said like two years ago, so I just wanted to circle back and say, this is something that is ongoing in my world. I still go off and meet with other superintendents. Like, you know, the one that I would give the example with that was most recent was meeting with Steve Meyer in Clinton. But that's not the only other superintendent meeting that I've had this year. I do go around to any job-like groups like the Asabet Valley Collaborative or the Worcester County Superintendents, but then I have these one-offs as well. And it just... We talk about things like, for example, the other day, we were talking extended day quite substantially and comparing the two programs and taking a look at what's working over there and how it's run. So it gives me an opportunity to connect with other communities. I'm very appreciative of that. And I still maintain, of course, my connections with the state, you know, some of those key connections that I didn't want to lose that I think continue to help to benefit and serve our purposes well in the district. So that's ongoing. School committee changes. I just want to talk about that for a minute here, too, because, as I said to Lorraine today in one of my emails to her, I'm not sure whether it's just the sentimental piece that's at play here. I'm not exactly sure what it is. I know that you're up still for reelection. You may or may not return. You know, we'd love to see you return, of course, and all the work that you've done. And Neil, you know, it's... I don't want to see you go, quite frankly. I don't. I think that you both have been critical to some of the growth that we've done as a school committee, as a district. So I said to Lorraine, I started thinking about it, and I started piecing together some things, and I thought, you know, I'm just gonna allude to it right now, but I think at some other point in time, even though you may or may not be here, I think we should really take a quick look and say, as a roundup, these are some of the things that we've done a lot of work on. And when I say these things, I know that some of you are gonna say, "Yeah, it brings back those memories," you know? And I think in part, too, because you've been here for the two years that I've been here, and so at least, for example, this is not a negative at all, or Steve, it's just that it's been two full years with you. And especially for the two of you, because we've done so much work on the fiscal component of things, and it's just been amazing, the work that's been accomplished. So I just want to go through some simple things, but at some other point in time, I think we need to reflect because I don't think we take enough time to celebrate some of the great work that's been done around the school committee table. For... I've just categorized a couple of things. I mean, I'm not gonna read a lot of detail, but I also said to Lorraine, behind every one of these is a huge amount of work. It's not like, "Oh, gee, this is just the topic." It's a topic, and then there's layers upon layers of work behind it. So fiscal, the regular reporting structures, and just, I think, of everything we've... All the rich discussions and coming to terms with where we've landed, huge. The fact that we do monthly and quarterly reporting out at school committees now, and you see a regular template now. You know, the infrastructures that we've built, the forensic audit, and the aftermath of that, positive, but it was a huge amount of work. The Masbo audit that led to the forensic audit, the corrective action plans, the amount of time we sat around these tables and hammered through those corrective action plans. The ongoing processes and refinements in our business office that I don't know how many times we come into those meetings and say, "Well, we discovered this, and so we're gonna do that." And that just... It's still ongoing. It's not nearly like it was, but, I mean, every now and again, we still come across some things. The review of all accounts, and when I say "all accounts," I mean "all accounts." The budget process review, you know, receives such positive feedback in the last couple of days about the process that we've taken, that we've put into place now, and the fact that we don't get as many questions. I mean, I heard from somebody in Bolton today that a mom who actually... One of our community members who said, "You don't get the questions anymore because you're talking about it all the time, and it's always up there. We know what's going on." So there's not that sense that we don't have an understanding of what's going on. Our workshop process, the budget binder itself, the budget book itself, the town meeting report outs, the PowerPoint presentations, how we deal with that is also different. The fact that you fully negotiated two contracts, two union contracts. Need I say more on that?
No.
The addition of the appropriate staffing. I know we're gonna talk about that tonight, but, you know, to support fiscal activities that we're doing and to bring about infrastructure there. For the school committee, the creation of the school committee manual, the expectation of minutes for all subcommittees, the creation of the goal-setting processes, the creation of your beautiful calendar, as much as we can tease about that, but you know, it's an incredible template for us moving forward. The fact that our subcommittees are so well-attended. Updated approach to your superintendent evaluation that's now in line with the DESE. Ongoing professional development work for MASC. I don't know if people realize the amount of PD work that you folks continually do throughout the course of the year. The fact that many of you attend the state conference. The complete policy overview. Oh, my gosh, that's an enormous amount of work that that committee has taken on. When I look to facilities, I look at what I came into and what we worked on, but then the preventative maintenance plans that we were able to put in place after that. The refreshed approach to our building maintenance, the creation of appropriate files, not just in maintenance, but everywhere else. The site cleanup in those little abandoned areas that were here, there, and everywhere, or the abandoned cars, or the trailers that were full of broken things, and all of that's gone now. When I look to sped and the changing of the role to the pupil and personnel director, oh, my gosh, that's an amazing support for this district, and Joan does so much more than just sped. They supported the new additional district-wide sped programs, the revenues and expenditures oversight. I mean, when you take a look at all of this, and all of this was beyond the regular work of school committee. This was all new stuff. You know, I said to Lorraine, like, I hope that when those of you leave us and were a part of this, you'll remember the amount of work that you did, and you need to leave knowing you were an integral component to moving this district forward in so many ways. So I... Just from the bottom of my heart, I just thank you both so much for your efforts in being a part of the broader family work. So thank you. That's me.
All right. Does anybody have anything to add? Neil? Mark? Everybody? Kathy? We're all good?
See ya.
I know you. I'm sure you have something to add. You good?
See ya.
Oh, see ya. Yeah, right. That's verbatim. Yes.
I just want to thank you for putting that together your right. I mean, maybe it's because I'm old, everything's a blur, but, you know, that it really is an incredible compilation of the work of this group, and I appreciate you pulling it together and acknowledging all of that. Thank you.
Even things like the SOI. I mean, when you think about the amount of work that went into that, and the subcommittees' work that was far before my time here, like the committees that you guys were... Again, Mark, you and Lynn were on, like, and Neil, you were involved there, too. Like, I mean, it's a huge amount of work. I think sometimes you do the job so well that it just looks so easy, and it isn't.
It's just common sense, though. Learn about the past, remember the past, like, how we got here, what happened to get us here. And when you have that historical context and then you see where things are going, it starts to fall into place in your head, and then it's common sense. It's not like you need to be some sort of... Have fiscal prowess or anything. You guys do the budget. All we do is come up with the questions of logic that deal with that, and how do we understand it better? How do we report out to the public better? And how does it affect, you know, the educators and the students? And that's the constant, like, mantra, you know? And anybody else that's sitting in the seat, that's all they have to do. You make it sound a lot better than it is.
Yeah, it's fun. Okay. Thank you. All right. I really appreciate you taking the time to put all that together.
Thank you.
Take a trip down the...
Memory lane for...
Take a deep breath and celebrate the successes, so we thank you for that. All right. I'm gonna move into the new business portion of the meeting. The superintendent's evaluation, and I think Superintendent Clenchey mentioned that we actually do now, and we have for the past couple of years, with... Three years with Kathy's guidance. Kathy Codyan is the chair of the Personnel Subcommittee. The Personnel Subcommittee is charged with working, guiding the school committee as a whole through the evaluation process. So I'm gonna let Kathy explain how the superintendent evaluation process works, and then I'm gonna share the compilation of the input from all eight school committee members. This is not Lorraine's review. This is the collective school committee review. So I'm gonna turn it over to Kathy.
Okay. Thanks. The Massachusetts Department of Education's Model for Educator Evaluation is a comprehensive evaluation system developed pursuant to Educator Evaluation Regulations 603 CMR 35. The model system was developed in 2012 and updated in 2015, and its goal is to improve student learning by improving teaching and administrative leadership. The model system requires the following. Individual school committee members rate the superintendent's performance against the standards for administrative leadership. So there's a rubric, and teachers... It's a rubric similar to teachers and principals and other administrators. The standards are for instructional leadership, management and operations, family and community engagement, and professional culture. Individual school committee members render a single, overall summative judgment of the superintendent's performance using the following ratings: unsatisfactory, needs improvement or developing, proficient, and proficient is the expectation, the rigorous expected level of performance, and finally, exemplary. Individual members of the school committee submit their evaluation of the superintendent to the school committee chair, who then compiles the individual ratings and drafts the summative evaluation. At a public meeting with the superintendent present, school committee members review the draft, discuss proposed revisions, and adopt a final summative evaluation report. This report is placed in the superintendent's personnel file, and the summative rating is submitted to the Department of Education. Superintendent's evaluation report is a public record.
Okay. So Kathy just explained the process. So what we did was we had each school committee member, and thank you, by the way, for everyone getting all their content in with all their information. And then I get the dubious task of looking at all of it and pulling together the overall ratings and then including the narrative, and each person is represented in the narrative. The overall rating for this year is proficient, which is the target for the Department of Education, and I'm gonna read you a little bit of the summative comments. I think it probably explains better than me trying to do this extemporaneously, and then I'm gonna ask for the rest of you folks to jump in because this is a collective evaluation. In her second year at Neshoba, Superintendent Clenchey has been able to move the district forward in many areas. A recognition of those efforts is evident by all school committee members and highly regarded. regarded. As a manager, she encourages both the administrative and educational staff the freedom to do their jobs. Superintendent Clenchey also models a collaborative approach with her direct reports, which in turn encourages them to take initiative and to consult each other about their challenges, successes, explore areas for opportunity, and lessons learned from failure or success. Because Superintendent Clenchey and her leadership team have brought stability and transparency to management and operations, she's been able to focus greater attention on improvement in the areas of teaching and learning. The school committee has supported her in these efforts and approved leadership positions that will focus on direct support in the areas of teaching, learning, assessment, and technology integration. And I think that that's evident through what went on in the budget process, because there were a lot of decisions made for the FY19 budget that are a result of the work that you were able to accomplish in order for us to be able to say, "Okay, now we're ready to get to this point." So we're finally moving forward. I think it's only fair to share that Superintendent Clenchey's first year was a, we were surprised you didn't run with your hair on fire, as you started to unfold a lot of things that weren't where you wanted them to be, a lot of processes that needed to be put in place, a lot of things that needed to be reexamined. And the same thing, because that trickled down to the school committee, we were able to do that work as well. As with any evaluation, there's always opportunity for growth, and I think it was collective that the school committee believes the opportunity for growth is in the area of communicating out with the public. And, you know, Superintendent Clenchey and I talked about this, and she has said several times and takes pride in the fact that Neshoba is a high-performing district. And I think the acknowledgement needs to be there that, yes, the administrative staff and absolutely the teaching staff are, you know, they're the constructs in place that shore up the entire educational system, and they're the guides. But one of the reasons that this school district is so high-performing is because the parents and the community in all three towns highly value education. Because they highly value education, they give their time, they give their resources, they give their expertise in areas that are not education. And in return, that I think they're looking for, we're all looking for, you know, "I want to be involved, I want to be in the loop, how can I be more involved?" So the communication, and it's a big, huge word, and what does it mean? I think the opportunity is to find ways to more broadly engage the full community with regular communications, and the school committee members have provided some suggestions, which I know you're going to take a look at, you've got your own that you're working on as well, as well as listening sessions. So when we have big events, big decisions are in the offing, and granted, things had to happen quickly because you were trying to get, do the day job plus the cleanup job, but, you know, let's get the community made aware of what we're looking at, what we're thinking about, and then bring them in and give them that information. Because again, I think the community itself, and several of you acknowledged this, the community itself wants to be part of it. So where does it make sense for them to be part of it, and how do we let them know? I'm going to read a couple other little things, but then, as Kathy said, you know, this is a public document, but I'm not going to go through the whole document on instructional leadership. We're an educational organization. I mean, instructional leadership, right? That's what we do. That's what you folks do. Superintendent Clenchey has put consistent practices in place to address an underperforming evaluation system, which is moving the district towards a culture of modeling collaboration, problem-solving, leadership, frank evaluation of goals and accomplishments. She and her team continue to use various data points for reference at the school and the student level. Data is not just what are the hard numbers, but sometimes data is informal and anecdotal, but that's important too, because that gives you and then us an indicator of where things may need to be, so that you can be nimble and quickly move there. The leadership team makes every attempt to have data inform instructional delivery, and that Superintendent Clenchey has been able to improve shareholder involvement. And I think that, you know, again, you know, large-scale issues or hot topics in the community would be well-served by bringing those forward, and hopefully this year you'll have more time in order to plan on that. Building effective teams is Superintendent Clenchey's greatest strength, and I think that it can't be understated how important and visible it is to the school committee that the leadership teams, there's a different vibe. It's just a collaborative, easy discussion points. People get, they kind of get along, they like each other, they build off one another, but we see that even though we're not in all of your meetings. She's adept at organizing her teams around central issues, presenting a shared vision, cheerleading them to move the initiatives through their respective schools and functional areas. New leadership and clear expectations and training have resulted in improved cleanliness, needed maintenance fixes, renewed pride across the district, within the physical buildings, and that impacts the way people feel when they're working and kids feel when they're learning. So pride in the district is a big thing, and we had pride, and Neshoba's always had pride, but now it feels like those structures are shoring it up. Regarding the district budget, and I can't state this any more than I'm going to read because, again, everyone mentioned this. Superintendent Clenchey and the business office have been steadfast in following the recommendations from the 2017 forensic audit and implementing appropriate best practices. I think one of the opportunities we saw was, you know, I don't know, we don't know if the staff is aware of what's happening in the budget, and what that means, and how the budget is really an indicator of the efforts and the work that's coming for the next year, but it would be valuable to hold some listening sessions. Yes, with the community, that's a given, we give some of that, but we could do more, but also within the schools themselves, so that the staff understands why were some of those decisions made? Because they're also a conduit to our community too, and I think that will help. There were things that you had put into place, given certain types of student behaviors in certain areas that were problematic. I've probably heard more about this than anyone, and, you know, one of the things that I learned about being on the school committee over these years is, I have, like, if I loved kids before, like, I want, there's just, there's just so much value and importance in these roles, and when you see that there's a need, you don't wait, you jump on it, and it gets addressed, and it's like, right away with the principals, right away with the staff, and the kids get what they need. The fact that the social and emotional constructs that you and Joan have worked on, and the programs that you've put in place to address programs that we didn't have, it's not, you know, kids staying in our district is not just about the money, and I get that there are people that are there, but it really is because it's the right thing to do for the student. So you be a student that needs specialized services. I mean, some we can't address, right? We just don't have that, but for many of those students, if they can get what they need and get it in a valuable, meaningful way in their own hometown, they have a better sense of community. It's just good for everyone, and we've seen that. So thank you very much for that work as well. And then the last one is professional culture. Superintendent Clenchey consistently demonstrates commitment to high standards for teaching and learning, efforts to align programming and services across the district, highlight important concrete actions taken to move the district forward, improve consistency across the buildings through grade levels and subject areas. Examples include the District Literacy Initiative, the science work that you're doing, aligning vertically and horizontally our new state standards, and incorporating inquiry-based skill development in the integration of scientific practices at each grade. I think the bottom line is, when it comes to the state of Neshoba Regional School District, I think, based on what all of you said, and I'm going to open this up for you all to speak, we are in a very good place. And the work that's been done over the past two years under your leadership has allowed us to take care of some of the things that were so loud, they were so noise, it was, they had to be addressed right away, while you were also building some of these structural constructs in place, and we are now ready to go in two years. So thank you for your Herculean efforts. I'm going to ask, you know, it's time to start looking at FY19 goal-setting, so, you know, I'm going to ask Kathy, as the chair of the Personnel Subcommittee, at our next committee meeting, to start working with the superintendent and start identifying, you know, it's almost like I said to Superintendent Clenchey the other day, it's like when you're in sales, people will say to you, "That's great, you did a great job, but what are you doing for me today?" And I apologize for that, but that's the way that it works, and you're in a high-performing district. So we'll start working on those goals. I think there are some suggestions that we can provide to help enable some of that communication, and the school committee can look at that ourselves too, and we do our own goal-setting. We have some things that we could do as well, and we'll get there. But I want to say thank you very much for the volume, the quality of the work that you and your team have done, and the focus that has remained steadfast on the students.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Anybody have any additional comments, since this is all based on your input? Neil?
They got to make the most of it, right?
Here he goes.
So I was on the superintendent search meeting, and along with many other people from the three towns, and, you know, we thought you were the right candidate, and you, you were offered the position, you were hired, and we thought, wow, she's coming from the state, this is like, we knew one of the biggest needs was to realign things and to make things the way they should be in the eyes of the state and everything else. And a lot of things we knew, we knew that, like, the general public, because it's so wonky, they have no idea just how sick this district was at that point in time. I don't think you did either. And I think what happened was all of a sudden, you know, that Masco review came out, and I remember I was sitting with Dr. Bates, the interim, in the office, and Lorraine was in there.
Oh, gosh. Be careful. What did I do?
We were just talking about some of the things that, you know, were challenges that were coming forth, and some of the very eye-opening things that were being discovered along the way. And we started thinking, oh my gosh, is this broken state? She's going to get here, she's going to run away the moment that she sees all the challenges. And you got here, and they got worse, and so much more was uncovered, to the point that, in my mind, that was always a concern, that this is just so overwhelming for even one person to handle, and where do you start with all these problems? So I have the highest respect for you over these two years and what you've been able to do. It's pretty amazing when you talk about this, we are, it's a government organization, right, and never notorious for being able to turn on a dime. It's a battleship, right? And you were able to deftly weave so many things and make so many changes in that short period of time that I think could have taken years were someone else in that seat. So it's just a huge, you know, yeah, okay. The towns really need to know that. I just think that that's very, very important. So regardless of your rating and everything that's in there, exemplary, I think, across the board in that particular fashion for what you've been able to, and what you've been able to do to help this district. And that's really all I got.
Thank you. You know, I appreciate you saying that. I said to Lorraine the other day, you never know what you're coming into a district until you're behind closed doors, and that really was the case here. And to your point, again, this is just from my lens only, I thought I knew what I was coming into.
We did too.
And then you get in here, and it's, in, you know, all honesty, it just, it takes your breath away, it took my breath away. I remember one of the first meetings I had with Pat sitting down, and I thought, oh my, and Pat didn't think anything was amiss, you know, but I knew things were amiss, like, you could start to see, because there was none of this other stuff at that point in time. But having said that, I think, you know, we were able to parse things off, we were able to bring the right people in, we worked diligently to put the right people in the right, and I said this in one of my emails, I think in my email to you last time, we worked so hard to put the right players where they needed to be and the jobs that they love to do. You know, like, somebody like Vicki Chartier, who loves being the treasurer, like, loves it. I don't know that that'd be something I would love, but she loves it, you know? Pat and Michelle, the attention to detail, or, you know, there's just, there was so much.
Rob.
Poor Rob. But, you know, I also, Rob was not in a leadership position at that point in time, but Rob, I remember clearly you coming in and having sidebar conversation with me, and saying, "Just so you know." And that was when I first just learned of our little graveyards out there with the broken things in them, you know, and you talked about pride, and I remember, and how many times have you heard me say this, Rob, pride starts at our buildings, you know, and I'm so, I am so fiercely proud of where we've gone in two years, but I could not, and I said this to you folks last year, I could not have done it without the support of the school committee. They helped to keep you up there. It really is, I mean, when you take a look across the district, not just Neshoba, but like, any district, there's a school committee that helps to keep you up there. That, and your staff, and we've just got amazing staff. I mean, we have, they're not just good staff, they are great staff. And so, I mean, it all comes together and works really, really well, so I thank you for those kind of words, but I said to Lorraine the other day, I don't think people really know the breadth and the depth of the work that was required inside of those two years, unless you were in every one of these meetings around this table, not just this meeting, you know, not just the school committee, the personnel, the policy, the, you know, the fiscal component of it, and all the other meetings that we have, you know. So I'm fiercely proud of the work that our teams, as you said earlier, it's not just a team, I mean, it's a family, certainly, you know, a school committee family, but inside of that are all these other teams, and they just work so well together, and I'm so fortunate.
Anybody have anything else they want to share about Superintendent Clenchey's evaluation? Thoughts? Certainly you've all given me input, and I hope that each one of you was able to hear your words come through in some of what I read, because I literally lifted. When I saw a common theme, I would lift and paste, and lift and paste, and then massage it together. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
For an incredible year.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
All right. We're going to move on to our FY18 new positions report. I'm going to turn it over to Superintendent Clenchey.
Thank you so much. I'm going to bring Anne Marie to the table, Rob Freeswick to the table, and Pat to the table as well. I think those will be the key players, and the roles that we're going to focus on tonight are the custodian, I'm going to kind of tee it up a little bit, and then we're going to kind of go through things. The custodian piece, as you recall, in fact, when I was going down memory lane today, I remember when you, when the department, you were at the department, and you said, "Is there anything that, you know, you would mention to us about, you know, takeaways from your visit to Neshoba?" And I remember saying about the high school, high school being so dirty.
Sweet.
I'm never going to get this job. But it was the first thing that, and then when you come in, and I just want to talk about that for a minute, and I actually mentioned this to the floor at Sawyer Council today when we were talking about things, I remember bringing a large contingent of the custodians to that table, I think within days of me getting here, and said, "I can see that we've got problems," because it wasn't just the high school, it was across the district. It's just that the high school was the one that struck me the most. And so I literally took, I don't know, Pat, if you were in that meeting or not, you may or may not have been, but I remember taking every idea that I got from around that table and going back and revisiting every single thing, and we put a lot of things in place, but one of the things that came through consistently is, "We don't have enough staff. We are just so far understaffed." And so we came forward to you folks and said, "We've got some ideas we want to put into play here." And so we're going to speak to that. The other area... The other area that, and it was kinda one of the things that also was going through the forensic audit, but we knew in advance, we needed extra support to help us with the fiscal components for our food services, extended day, you know, the, the facilities. The facilities is kind of a different one, because we did some shifts that were actually, it really wasn't a full add, that position. So we're gonna talk about it tonight, but what it was, we actually kinda saved, that was an area we actually kinda saved money on. So, I, I, we'll just speak about the position tonight and the strengths that we think that it's brought, but we, we won't talk about money, because it was one of those areas that, once everything flushed its way out, it was an area of savings for us. So we'll talk about that, and then I think we also wanna touch base on the high school, the assistant principal position, that, and I'll kinda tee that up a little bit too when we have some of that discussion. So I think, and what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna turn it over to Anne Marie, who kind of pulled all of our, just as you pulled all of the school committee's thoughts, pulled all of our thoughts together and said, let me start, and then we're all gonna kinda chime in. So Anne Marie, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Brooke. Pat, Rob, and I, thank you for the opportunity to report on the new positions and how they've been going. As we just mentioned, we're gonna talk about the custodial positions, the program assistance for facilities and for extended day food service. We'll go over the new position, the change in the positions in Pat's office, and the new assistant principal, the third assistant principal for academics at the high school. The four additional custodial positions that were approved by the Personnel Subcommittee were hired to provide additional custodial support for the schools, schools, including on the weekends, and that was big. They also wanted to reduce overtime, we had high absenteeism, we had a high number of workplace injuries, and the custodians were working a lot of hours. They were, they were expressing to us that their work-life balance was non-existent. It was all work and no, no life. That was what was, we made, made, helped to make them sick, contributing to the high absenteeism, and a large number of workplace injuries. So we envisioned with those four positions, enhanced weekend support for the athletic program and for those groups that use our school buildings. So that's two days a week. The other three days a week when they were inside the schools, there was some, that provided additional custodial support, so that if somebody was absent, they were able to cover that person's area without incurring overtime to do so. They were able to do some maintenance things, do some painting, little projects. We also were seeking with these positions to reduce the district's potential liability and that we had some of our buildings at times open and unattended. So, so those four positions weren't all filled at the same time, but they came in about midway through fiscal year 17. So, they were on board, they weren't on board for fiscal year 16, part of 17, and then this is the first, till now, the first full year. So it's been a year and a little bit that we've had those four additional positions. And again, they didn't all start on the same day. So the first thing is the overtime use in fiscal year 16, which was the first year that we, the last year that we didn't have them, it's a bad sentence, but the year that we, before those positions came on, we had $102,800 in custodial overtime. The next year, which was fiscal year 17, where we had a partial year with those four new hires, it went from 102.8 to 78.150, a decrease of $24,650, I think it's like 30-something percent. And then this year, which is the first full year that we've had them, but only through April 30th, because the year's not over yet, went, remember, 102.8, 78.150. So far this year, we're at 68.268. So, I mean, you're always gonna have some overtime, there's snow, there are some school events that go two to six, there's sports, there's night activities, games, but it's reducing. We envision that as the head custodians get used to this new construct of hires, that that figure will continue to go down as it's gone down last year and this year. We also hope that because the custodians wouldn't be as fatigued, we would have less sick time, and sure enough, that was the case. In fiscal year 17, the custodians used 298 hours of sick leave, and to fiscal year 18. This year, it's been 192. So from 298 to 192, so that's a 36% reduction in the sick leave use. So we think that's awesome. And our workers' comp costs in 16, the first year without them, $19,005, in fiscal year 17, $19,500, to $7,281 in our workers' comp costs. This year, except for one, one large injury that I kinda took out because it was kinda an aberration, it's down to $3,600. So our workers' comp costs have decreased each year as well as our sick leave, so that's a good thing.
So, are you good? Cause I'm dying to jump in here on the workers' comp.
Jump.
I can remember when I first came on to the school committee, a couple of years in a row, and it was Pat's predecessor would share, you know, our workers' comp is up again this year, workers' comp is up again this year, and I remember thinking, oh, my gosh, what's happening, you know? But, but, but I didn't know. And I think what's really impressive is that through the work that you folks have been able to do, not only, I mean, it's not just about reducing the cost, we certainly appreciate that, but people are happier, they're productive, they're taking pride in the work that they're doing. And now, all of a sudden, that trend of workers' comp going up every year, up, 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 there's not much we can do about it, maybe that's what needed to happen in order for those, that workers just a focus on the employee, a focus on what do you need, what, what are your problems? And I remember Anne Marie holding those sessions with the entire custodial staff, and I remember you sharing, and I remember you sharing a lot about it, and just listening to people and finding out what do they need. And I think that listening is something we're all gonna do a little bit more of, but, because it pays off in dividends. So, thank you for sharing all that.
I spoke to Tanya about the weekend support for the athletic program with those four new custodians. She is so appreciative, I mean, she couldn't even, I had to shout her out after just a little while, because I get it, you think this is good, right? Because our athletic teams practice in place seven days a week with someone assigned on those weekends. She is no longer worried and getting up at the crack of dawn to make sure that they're gonna have custodian coverage on any given weekend. She doesn't, she doesn't worry at the end of the day that someone's gonna leave the scoreboard on at night. She knows that the bathrooms are open, so they don't have to worry about the porta-potties. But, you know, they, and they also tend to the needs of the groups that use our schools, helping them use basketball, use football, our own teams, but also the people that are inside, you know, the bands, the drama events, anybody that's there on the weekend using our, using our facilities. The head custodian said that with those additional people, scheduling is a lot easier. There are fewer frantic phone calls to get someone to cover if you've got an absence during the week, an absence during the week, because if it's one of those three days that the, the new person is there, you know, that's taken care of. So, they said too, that they had in the past had to either cancel weekend events or turn people away who wanted to rent our buildings, and they said the incidence of that is either down or nonexistent, one for the other.
So that's something you wanna keep in mind too about when you think about fiscal, or the ROI.
We had, before this, before these four positions come on, we had, came on, we had one custodian working on the weekend. So she would ride the circuit, you know, she would be on the road on Route 117, opening up the buildings, leaving them, and then opening up the next one and going about her business, and then at the end of the day, reversing that process. So our buildings were many times unattended and wide open. It's just like, you know, I mean, I break out in hives just even thinking of the horrible things that could have happened, you know, with, with that there. And plus, she was the only custodian working, so she was alone. There were kind of, it was a safety issue as well. Now there are four, you know, one, two, three, four. So, the buildings aren't unattended, and there's no custodian who's the only one in the district who's working on any given day. So from the liability and the safety standpoint, that's much better.
Now, before you go on, because, before you go on to others, let's, let's give Rob a chance to talk too, from, from your perspective, I mean, you've been here for a fair number of years, so I mean, you can speak from-
Yeah, I mean, before sitting, you know, in this position, trying to find coverage for the weekend for these different events was, it was difficult for, you know, Richard Magliano or whoever was doing the scheduling at that point. And, you know, just talking to the guys, you know, being in the trenches with the guys, I mean, everybody was very, very tired, especially this time of year, you know, when you get through the winter, everybody's put in a tremendous amount of hours, and, you know, they were beat up, and, you know, that's where a lot of these injuries, I think, were happening. Guys were trying to do things, they were tired, they weren't thinking clearly, you know, instead of asking for help, they were just trying to do things, and that's when the, you know, the injuries were starting to come up. So, having these additional bodies to take some of the workload off of the guys, you know, definitely paid dividends.
And I think too, Lorraine had mentioned about staff morale, and I know that we've all talked about that too, the morale months, custodians and such, and I just think it's just, I mean, so much, so much better, you know? I, I remember when we were in negotiations, one of our negotiation nights, one of the people with the Unit C, one of the leadership, had met up with me outside in, in the hallway and said, you know, we cannot lose the momentum, it's so positive, we've gotta keep this going. So, so very respectful. So I was, like, from my lens, what we wanted to accomplish, I think we accomplished in spades. I'm very comfortable with where we're at with the custodian involvement.
There's some standards out there too, based on, how many individuals you have in a building based off the square footage of the building. And we're, we're pretty close to where we need to be, you know, on a level of cleanliness of the building, plus, you know, how many individuals are working in the square footage of the building. So, I think obviously before, we were, you know, we were short individuals at that point, so I think that's why you saw a lot of the problems that we had. Now that we have those individuals, it's, you know, we're just stepping up our program.
We also shifted our, their shifts, and that's the big thing to really note here. So we have like the Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, but then we have the Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday. So, I mean, it's, it's, you know, we thank our unions for working so, so nicely through that, because that's, you know, I'm very appreciative of that, very respectful of that too. So, I would say from our lens, that was the right thing to do, and I think we're really glad that we did it. So I don't know if you have any questions on the custodial component of the add?
No.
No? Okay, great. Okay, Anne Marie, do you wanna continue on then?
I would, thank you. We added this year an assistant principal for academics at the high school, Beth Pratt is her name, who we anticipated to be the benefit. And this position is that would provide someone who had a focus on advancing educator growth, primarily through the educator evaluation system and through development of our, of our staff. I spoke to Principal DiDomenico, felt the benefits that he and his staff are seeing having this position. And he said, really, without a doubt, that Beth's biggest impact is in the area of educator evaluation. He said that there's greater consistency with the deadlines, she's written up, she wrote up a schedule, who is about the, who's gonna evaluate who, and she's monitoring that and making sure that it's, that it's okay. She's had some meetings with the other assistant principals about what we call calibration. They used to call it, and I thought it made better sense when they used to call it inter-rater reliability, so that if I go into a room to see what the teacher's observing, and Pat goes in, we both see the same thing, and how they're doing is that, the three of them will go in together and then have a meeting, what did you see, what did you see? They've had meetings that they've come in with evaluations that they've written and shared them with each other, so that they're helping each other, the three of them improve their practice together through that, through that work. Also, she's provided some tools that she's accumulated over the years about writing the summit of evaluations, some, some tips on how to use our online evaluation system, iOS Education, they used to call it baseline edge. So that, that's another, another positive about that. She's provided some professional development, smart goals, you know, the teachers each do smart goals at the beginning of the year, you all know that. Then too, if the educator, if one of the pieces of the educator's goal isn't something that the principal of the evaluator would notice when they go into an observation, the educator has an opportunity to upload evidence of how they, how they've met that goal. And there were some glitches with Google Docs getting that uploaded into iOS Education, so she's worked with the department heads on helping the teachers do that, to come up with, you know, like the three different ways that you can get this accomplished, so that, so that the process of doing the evaluation doesn't get in the way of demonstrating what it is that the teachers are, are trying to develop. She's played a key role in the late start professional development, professional learning communities. She's, she and Mary Marata sent out a survey at the beginning of the year to try to get a handle on what those were doing. She helped to refocus, helped some of the teams refocus themselves in, in those areas, so that she gave a little bit more structure to that. And she's also started already for next year, determining what some of those agendas will be with those PLCs for the late start activities. She's taken a big role in substituting, in scheduling the substitute teachers. The teachers, there's a seven-period day, but the teachers only teach for five of those periods, because they've got two, that really the substitute teacher has no input into this. There's two others, but the substitute doesn't need a prep period or, you know, so that those two periods, she's done the puzzle pieces. And so she said, you know, we have this many substitutes, but we get this many openings, so during the first period that you're not, that you're not with that teacher's schedule, you can do this, you can do this, so that there's a much bigger chance of, of more coverage, less time that the students don't have a qualified substitute with them. That's, that's a bear, I can imagine. Also, Paul said that Beth is very active in the hiring process, she is a proponent and she strongly encourages the teachers to contact the parents, big on that. And she's a member of the Professional Development Committee, and she's, she's doing, which I think Paul articulated that she and Paul came in at the same time, so she even, he even imagines that as the team grows together, you know, that that impact will be greater still.
I think the substitute scheduling was one of those bears that we didn't see ahead of time until she got in there and managed to tackle that, do a really nice job with that. I, I don't think that the coverage is still where I'd like it to be, but that's not, that's not a assistant principal issue, that's just a, still a supply and demand issue for us. Any questions for Anne Marie? You're happy?
Yeah. You spoke briefly about the, your involvement with the late start and professional development. And last year, we had had a presentation about those late starts in the programs, and as I recall, personally, was not, did not find the information that we were provided with satisfactory in terms of really letting us know how that time and those efforts impacted student learning. There was a lot of anecdotal and feeling types of report-outs, and I know that now there's a new principal and, you know, Beth has that position. Did we put on our agenda, looking at that, getting a report out about what was done this year, how it was decided, and what the results of any of that PD has been?
The professional development update?
The late start update, yeah.
Oh, you know what? I'm glad you brought that up, yeah. Let's see if we can get that on for June.
Yeah.
Will that give you time?
Oh, yes.
So maybe the June 6th meeting? If we can put that on there.
Yep. Thank you.
Great idea. Thanks for bringing that up. Anything else for Anne Marie? No, program assistant for facility, for facilities, which again, will tie in between Anne Marie and Rob, so, as, as well as the individual, and I think you're, I'm not sure who's gonna pick this up, for your offices as well. So we, we still have some bodies that we wanna make sure we've got coverage on, so go ahead.
I quote said that this, the program assistant facilities isn't technically a new add, because it was like a compilation. We had two positions in that office that were eliminated, and that one, so actually there was, it was a gained position. But I'll tell you what, I don't think there's a person in the world that thinks that, that we didn't gain a lot more than we gave, you know, by getting Pam Sylvester into that position. I think you're all aware that the files, the filing system was deficient slash non-existent in the facilities office, and so she worked from scratch, she put the systems in place to facilitate the running of Rob's office. She's implemented our school, which is the new, the replacement to school dude, school system that we had, and she oversees the facilities ticketing system, you know, for, for things that need to be done. She makes appointments and deals with the vendors on ordering, billing, she's in charge of distributing to the, the schools, the MSDS sheets when we have chemicals that we use in our schools. The schools have got to maintain a, a record of that, and so she's on top of that. She works with Tanya to book our, book our facilities when people wanna use our, our offices. And there's nobody that hasn't got good things to say about Pam, she's the public face of the facilities department. The vendors, the callers, they're the first smiling face she sees when they walk in, she's proactive, she, she takes an initiative, and there are plenty of people who have said, how did we ever do this before, before we had Pam? So, that position, and that person in that position, really, I think, you know, Rob would, would probably, I know-
She keeps me on the straight and narrow, that's what she does.
I'm not, right? She's the glue. She really is the glue.
She is the glue. She's the glue of the, the facilities department. You know, I'll just give you one example, we had a scheduling conflict at the high school, we had a big track meet and another group that wanted to use the high school that was gonna bring in about 300 people, and it just, the way it was in the schedule, it wasn't showing correctly that there was gonna be that large of a track meet. So Pam, single-handedly, brought these individuals from the high school down to Lancaster and sold them on that site in order to move that down there, because if that hadn't happened, we would've been in big trouble with the police department, fire department, it just, it wouldn't have worked with both of those there. So, just her public relation, you know, skills is just, it's unbelievable.
I was thinking too, the emergency that she, she deals with, I was thinking like the sewer backup that we had at Hale, was a week ago, and you were off that day, and I felt so badly, cause I'm calling Rob, even though- so badly because I'm calling Rob, even though, even though you were off that, I think that was the only day all year you've ever taken off. And I was, I was on the phone to you. But she came up right away. And like I said, you know, we need to deal with this right now, blah, blah, blah. And everything, everything, which is so quick. So, um, and I would agree when I think of the filing system and all of that, and what she's done down there, it's amazing. Excuse me. So I don't, I don't, I think it's the person and the position. I think we want to separate it now because for the purpose of this group, we're talking about the position. So I want to make sure that we're really separate on that.
And I, I want to add one quick thing. I think it's important for our community to understand when Superintendent Plancha gets giddy about the filing system. Because she gets giddy about her filing system. And it's like, oh yeah, great. You got your files set up. Here's the issue. The filing system that she's referencing is critical regulatory required documentation that either couldn't be located, or had to be, you know, had to be created, or had to be found, or it's the, it's the, it's the compliance issues that could come from that, and that did come from that, that create problems for the district that we can't solve for, that the administration and the school committee can't solve for. It is so important that those documents are now in place, that we know where the documents are, we can go grab them. And then if we get a phone call from a regulatory or a legal organization, we can create, we can not create them, but we can grab them quickly. So that is why it's not just, you need the historical perspective, and we don't want to lose that historical intelligence, but it's also from a legal perspective and a regulatory perspective that we're covered now. So thank you to you and Pam, and thank you to all you folks that, I know.
And I think too, and I, I don't talk about this very often, and by the way too, we want to say, like, because I know Jones here, shout out to Jones' office for all of the rebuilding of files in there too. And so Chairman Ross, I just want to mention too, one of the things that we don't talk about often is shredding. And the fact that, I mean, this is not a, gee, did it happen? No, we actually had the box, those bags of shredding that had happened in our offices.
Shredded files.
Shredded files. And, you know, so I think that, you know, I appreciate.
They were not supposed to be shredded.
That were not supposed to be shredded.
That should not have been shredded.
Should never been shredded. And so I want, I want, I just want to put that out there too, because I appreciate the fact that you're saying they weren't there. But the fact is, we also had some that also then just were shredded. So, and I think we don't want, again, when we talk about the breadth and the depth of the work that has happened in the last couple of years. So, I'm sorry.
I think the other thing that isn't much talked about is, you know, how disturbing it is for a parent to walk into the office and say, can I take a look at my child's 504? And be told, yeah, we can't find it. Or it doesn't exist as the changes were supposedly made and so forth. And I think that's one of the biggest things, to make sure that that's all in compliance and that parents and children are pretty, pretty well assured that they're safe now. That, that to me was one of the biggest things that scared me about everything.
And I think Chairman Ross' point as well, taking the compliance piece. She's right. Because at the end of the day, I'm the one that has to respond back to the DESE, or a lawyer, or whatever. And, and those files are critical. So, so I think we want to shift now to your focus.
So there was one position added to the business office, and that was the position of accounts payable slash accounts receivable specialist for that. And that was Erica Smith, which was added to my office. And she basically, she does all of the accounts payable and accounts receivable functions as it would relate to full day kindergarten. And what she did was she took over a lot of the work that Michelle Cody was doing, and, and to free up her time, so she could then in turn take over what I was doing in, you know, in my previous position. And, and as far as that goes, some new things have been added to those, both of those jobs, and student activity reconciliations.
Which was huge.
Which was part of forensic audit. And Michelle assists me in, in the audit. And the transportation coordination piece, that's now in Michelle's position. And she continues to do the procurement. As far, she is also somebody that has gone through all of the certifications for procurement in the district. So it has actually made my transition a lot easier, having that additional position. So moving on to food services and extended day, we have a program assistant that we added, and that's Leah Botko. And she provides support to the food services and the extended day program. And basically, she does a lot of the state and federal reporting, and she does the billing and coordination of the extended day program. She assists in the preparation of financial reports to both the food service and extended day programs for me. She maintains the software for the district as it relates to the point-of-sale system that we have in all of our schools. And she's the contact person for free and reduced lunch. She tracks student lunches, lunch balances. And she also assists in program events with extended days. So she's, during the day, she flip flops back and forth, doing two different jobs, but does it seamlessly. So, and I appreciate that. As far as being in compliance, as you've talked before, it's allowed us to bring things up to the level where it should be.
I think those are all the positions.
Any questions?
Nope.
Wow. Thank you all for coming and staying and sharing. Okay, Susan, as the chair of the policy subcommittee, you're up next on policy manual review, section K and L, and policy EFD.
So I'll just, I guess I'll write into it. We didn't have a KA policy or a KVA, so the school community relations goals and the school parent relations goals. So the subcommittee recommends adopting mask policies for both of those. We recommend replacing the non-custodial parents rights policy with the mask policy because it had some updated legal provisions in it. We also recommended eliminating the next two documents from the policy manual. There's a sample affidavit and a sample notice for non, well, the affidavit was for non-custodial parents requesting student records. And then there was a sample notice to the custodial parents, so we feel like those belonged in the policy manual. And actually, it should be noted that I was not at this meeting, but I used the notes and compiled them. So if Steven and, or Steve and Elise have anything to add, they can, they can add that. The, let's see. So then we're on KBE now. We recommend adoption of that mask policy that we did not have about relations with parents and booster organizations. The KCB, community involvement and decision-making, the recommendation was to eliminate the policy, because the provisions in that policy for the use of community members in an advisory capacity are included in a BDF policy that we added in October as part of the section B policy manual review. So that policy was a mask policy, advisory committees to the school committee that will be in the new manual, but is not posted online yet.
Okay.
So I apologize if that confused anyone, because it is in, it is in the section B, but that's, that was posted way back in, in October. I've spoken to the KCD, the Public Gifts to the Schools. When I looked at the, the meeting notes and then the marked-up copy that we got back from Dorothy from MASK, there seemed to be a little bit of a discrepancy between the notes. But I spoke with Elise and, and we're good with the one, the markups that are in the, the packet for tonight's meeting. So, yeah, so, so the KCD there is the one that we recommend keeping in the manual. The KDB, there, there was some language differences. So we wanted, or the recommendation was to keep our policy that include, it's paragraph two in the policy, that includes language about requesting public records. So the rest of the policy matches our policy, but then ours also has, I mean, matches mask policy, I'm sorry. But our policy also has some language in it that's separate, it's a separate paragraph that specifies a time period for how long we should keep the policies posted online. So maintaining minutes of policy. So we specify 10 years, but MASK doesn't specify that. So we thought it made sense to keep that in. For KDB, the replacement of our policy with mask policy, the only difference is that our policy had allowed for the responsibility for system-wide or sensitive news releases to be delegated to a designee instead of superintendent. So we replaced that with mask policy. So it's a superintendent's responsibility. And then mask policy also specifies that any general releases be made to all media outlets simultaneously. So that, that makes sense to, or makes sense to the subcommittee. The recommendation was to eliminate KDDA, the publication of personal information, because it was covered in other areas of the policy manual. KE, the recommendation for that was the replacement of our policy, which actually seemed like two different sets of procedures rather than policy. One for access to the school committee and the other for access to public, or not access to public complaints, the other, to make public complaints. To replace that with MASK's KE policy, which has a different title. Their title is public complaint. SoKF, I haven't, there was a note, this was the, the meeting that Budget and Warren attended with policy, that again, I was unable to attend. But there was a note that KF will be held. So we, for Budget and Warren's update after review of leases. So I'm not sure where that stands. But, and if we decide to move forward with approving this in form, we can approve it with the exception.
Okay.
KH A and KH B is strength of option mask policy that we did not have about public solicitations in the school and advertising in the school. And there was a note there about how that might impact lunch menus. So just once, once that, yeah, that's in place, I think Elise specifically was, you mentioning like Tyson Chicken Nuggets or something, how, how that might affect.
Yeah, that's promotion, right?
That, yeah, that was.
Right, yes. That was a specific question we wanted to bring forward.
We don't need to include a brand.
No, no, just to be sensitive of that when.
Yeah, okay.
I'm assuming that's what you meant. Was that the discussion?
Yes. I can wait till we're discussing it though, because there's a bit more detail.
Okay, good. KI, we, the, the subcommittee recommended replacing our policy with mask policy. That includes language about, yeah, so, yes, it, it includes language, it, this reads wrong. I'm, I'm, I'm sorry.
It's okay.
So it says it includes language about visitation for the purposes of teacher comparison. So it specifies that that should not happen. It makes it sound like, like we want that to happen. So in other words, our policy said that, didn't say specifically that, that parents couldn't show up and observe several different teachers, just to say, hmm, I want to. So MASK says that that's not allowed.
Okay.
So, yes, so that's, that would be.
Yeah, that, that would be, that would be a little disruptive.
But the way I wrote in these notes, it kind of looks like we want that to happen.
Yeah.
Oh, and that's K. So should we discuss K before moving on to?
Ms. Kathy?
Just on the, the visitors to the school.
The KI?
Yes. The second paragraph, it says visits by parents to several classrooms in a given grade for the purpose of comparing teaching styles to provide a basis for requests, first through assignment, et cetera, are strongly discouraged. Now, doesn't, to me, that would open the door to someone who is not easily discouraged. So if we want to just wordsmith it to say.
Not exactly.
No.
Yeah, yes. I would strongly.
Well, yeah.
Not exactly.
Yeah. So whatever the appropriate word is there.
Did you recall having a discussion about that, or?
I don't think so. No, I think that, that question didn't occur to us when I was looking at it. We were figuring, but you're right, there are sometimes people who are not strongly discouraged.
Dorothy may have some good suggestions for that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That might be.
It's cool that we don't want to try.
Yeah, please do.
Yeah.
I have a question.
Yeah.
Uh, KBE, about the parent booster organizations, does this include like one-shot organizations when they want to raise money for a specific event, like going to?
Just a second, I was taking notes on the KI.
Like going to DC or something. Because it says that all organizations will be 501(c)(3). Or they can't be an organization? And I'm just wondering what the, the copy of the organizational papers that are submitted to the superintendent would look like. I'm just wondering if they apply somewhere?
Oh, that they, that they obtain a copy of the final paperwork and file it with the district? Is that what you're saying?
Well, the, the organizations won't be recognized unless the principal files paperwork with the superintendent. And superintendent, according to this number one, second number one, yeah. And then what had me concerned was the second one, the third one, number three, says that they all have to be 501(c)(3). So you can't raise money unless you're a 501(c)(3).
I, I mean, I certainly don't have the answer to that.
I, I would assume, I don't know either, but I would assume that that is state regulation.
You know what? I do remember hearing something about that. You, you do have to be a 501(c)(3) if you're an organized parent group on behalf of, and the beneficiary of it is the district. Is that right?
You know, I was just thinking too. I, I know that this is run past MASC's legal counsel, but I wonder what our legal counsel would, how they would interpret it.
I always thought it was food allergies, the reason we don't have bake sales anymore. But they're not 501(c)(3).
Well, and even like the kids raising money to go to DC.
Yeah.
So it's a fairly recent mask policy.
It's a fairly recent mask policy, so.
It is fairly recent.
This is about raising money for the kids in school.
It's one of those, there was a batch that came out in October of 2016.
Yeah.
And.
So can, can, Susan, can you guys touch base with Dorothy? Can, can you touch base with the attorney?
Yeah.
Because, yeah, that one, we don't, we want to make sure is.
Don't want to discourage anybody from raising money.
And then can?
But we don't want to violate state law.
But I guess the question is, what are the guardrails around the organization, what the organization is, right?
Right. And if they're 501(c)(3), there's very specific audits and things that need to go through.
Right.
They're not just raising money and.
And that's probably good information for you folks to have regularly and at the school level.
And then on KDB.
Susan, are you feeling good that everybody read your policies?
I know.
Yeah.
Again, they're not my policies. She wasn't there then. I don't have a good memory. And I did not offer them. So number one, it says the school committee chair will be the official spokesperson for the.
Oh, sorry, what, what?
KDD. KDD and number one. So the school chair is the official spokesperson for the committee, right? Except as this duty is just delegated to the superintendent. Can anybody delegate this to the superintendent? Just being the spokesperson?
I think that's what they're referencing is. Where, is it KB?
KDD.
Don't wonder.
I was, I thought it was KB.
You're asking who is the authority? If this, if the chair is not the spokesperson, who has the authority to give the superintendent?
The superintendent. And, and why would that happen? Because, because, because she's the head edge chair.
Right. And I would, the way that I read it, anyway, when we were sitting in the meeting, was that the school, the chair is the official spokesperson, except as they then delegate that duty.
To the superintendent.
To the superintendent for things that, you know, really would not be appropriate to be coming from the chair.
Right.
That's what we assume.
That's what we assume.
Yes.
I'd prefer not to.
I know. We, well, so.
So is there a question?
Yeah, I was just going to ask the same thing. Is there a question?
Do you want to add, would you feel better if we added a word that says, except as the chair designates that duty?
Or even just as the school committee does.
Or, except when this, no, except when this.
Well, no, the school committee can't designate it because.
Who would you want to?
Well, then it would be the vice chair. Kathy?
The way I read it is that the school committee, and this is in our handbook as well, the school committee chair is the spokesperson for the school committee.
Right.
When you see things that happen in other school districts and it's unknown. When you see things that happen in other school districts and it's unknowns, they're not talking to the chair of the school committee. They're talking to the superintendent. And I think that's what number two says. So the school committee chair, if someone were to call me about something that went on at one of these meetings, I would refer them to the ring. The next one speaks to system-wide things or, you know, news things, would go to the superintendent.
Yeah, and so, so the number one, and I know that, so we did have a policy on this. And number one is a bullet that's verbatim in our previous policy.
Yeah.
Number two, like I had mentioned, we felt was important to remove the designee, just so that if it were, you know, sensitive, that it was your sole responsibility to create. But I guess the, we didn't catch.
I guess, I guess.
That was not part of our previous policy.
My biggest question about number one is, it feels like it's, it's making it more cumbersome than it needs to be. And so the school committee chair will be the official spokesperson of this committee.
Period.
Period.
Get rid of the S.
Because then, cause you assume if the chair's not gonna do it or can't do it, then the vice chair can or would do it. But you wouldn't automatically delegate that to the superintendent.
So do you wanna remove?
Just remove after the comma.
And then on number three? Okay, good, I'll, I can do that. So number three, all statements made to the press by other staff members in particular school must be cleared with the principal. Do you want staff making statements to the press?
No, we, our principals always take the lead with this.
So maybe just kill that sentence. Because the principal can delegate to, right?
Yeah, I, I.
Again, this was in our previous policy, so I think maybe what happened was we, the assumption was.
That's okay, that's okay, that's why we're doing this, it's good work, yeah.
But I, I think, like, I think if we're not talking about something sensitive, but for example, something exciting has happened at one of the schools. And often you see teachers get interviewed by, you know, about these things. Something, oh, this wonderful new program. Don't we want that sort of specificity in there that anytime a staff member is gonna be interviewed about? Maybe you've got one teacher who's doing some really outstanding STEM program, that before they are interviewed, that's run by the principal.
So maybe what you say are the responsibility of the principal of that particular school. So it's either the responsibility, either the response is the responsibility or the delegation is the responsibility. I think that's all we need to do is clarify that.
Yeah, it's just so that that's in there.
So news, news releases that are of concern to only one school or to an organization of one school are the responsibility of the principal or his or her designee of that particular school. Does that make sense?
It does.
And then you kill the next sentence.
That sounds looser to me.
You say it again?
That sounds looser to me.
No, the principal would have to designate somebody, identify someone to speak for the school. Whereas the other thing is that, you know, somebody could be waiting at the end of the driveway at the school and.
Yeah, I think, I think you're trying to tighten it up, actually. I think just the opposite, I think it's tightening it up.
So maybe I misunderstood. When you said must be cleared, I thought you said must be cleared with the principal or a designated.
No.
Oh, okay, gotcha.
No, I'm a responsibility of the principal.
It goes with the first sentence.
Gotcha.
Or his or her designated.
Third sentence, adding the designated to the second sentence.
No, we're killing the second sentence.
Should there be a second sentence that says no staff member?
Oh, sorry, yes, that's the, it's a very long sentence, so I read it as too. Right, killing the second sentence.
What was it, Susan?
So, so it's, are you keeping the word responsibility of the principal?
Yes. So it's, so it's, you know, leave everything up until the organization of one school, comma, are the responsibility of the principal, comma, or his or her designee, comma. So you're adding comma of his or her designee, comma, right before of that particular school. And then you're deleting the second sentence of that bullet.
So, and I don't know if this, I know that when there are, whenever the press is involved, I always think about that there's something serious or provocative that has happened. There's good stuff too, but with regard to the, the principal being responsible for articulating, where does communication with the superintendent come in? So that you're aware, does that have to be part of the policy or is that just an expectation?
No, I think that's probably just protocol. I mean, because right now, I mean, for the kinds of things that Elise is talking about, the principals do that completely on their own. As soon as there's even the inkling of anything else, I get the phone call immediately.
Okay, so it doesn't have to be policy, it's.
No, it's practices.
Expectation practice, okay. Okay, well, good.
Lynn, did you have a question?
Uh huh. KH A.
KH A.
Public solicitations? Public solicitations, yes. We had trouble with this a couple of years ago.
You need to get a Kindle or something like that. Do something else, or you need.
Sorry. Commercial and fundraising activities, number three. Major shops, well, it's, it's actually talking about them. And we had trouble with these a couple of years ago, with jump roping and handing out gifts and.
Oh, I didn't even know.
And this, and I don't, I don't know where this falls. I don't know where, and I think it falls into here somewhere, so.
What are you saying? The language needs to change or you're glad that we resolved those problems?
Distribution of the, you know, tables. Oh, it says that the school committee has to give permission for all this stuff.
No.
And that's the number two. That's number one, no direct solicitation of student or employees may take place without school committee permission. Number two, the school committee, school committee permission.
That's, that's, we, we can't be solicit. Oh, you're suggesting that the students were solicited in that school? But that's no longer happening?
May permit occasional commercial fundraising activities related to the objectives of the school.
I'm not looking at the ones. She's looking at the second number one. She went from the, the first number two to the second number one.
Following these guidelines, may permit commercial or fundraising activities related to the objectives of the school with the following exceptions.
She's in the second, second, the paragraph before the second section of the.
All right.
I'm reading this, so we have to give permission. No general class distribution of commercial fundraising literature may be placed without school committee permission.
Oh, golly, do you really wanna be doing that?
No, it, that's, but it says.
I'm gonna read that one.
You.
It might be our interpretation, but.
Yeah, so, so you, you just read the, you're talking about, so we're good with the other thing. We're good with the jumper thing impacting instruction.
Well, that's what came to mind when I was reading it.
Okay, okay. Following these guiding statements, the superintendent and principals may permit occasional commercial or fundraising activities related to the objectives of the school with the following exceptions. No, so it's during the, this is my interpretation, is that students and employees can't be solicited during, like, during the school hours.
Without.
Unless we say, sure, that's okay, right? So, so, you know, like a student.
So we've never, to my acknowledgement, we've never been.
Approached.
To have any of these things happening. And one of these was that jumper gift giving thing.
So fundraisers are not typically.
Yeah, four years ago, or three years ago. That was a disaster.
Yeah. But it, but it says here, I mean, this was not ours, right? This came from the MSB, I mean, MASC? And, and do we wanna start having all direct solicitations and fundraising activities come through us?
I'm still not reading it in that same way, Susan. I, I'm reading it, the following, following these guiding statements for superintendent and principals may permit occasional, like, it's got all those little may's and occasionals in there. Commercial or fundraising related to objectives with the following exceptions.
There just can't be the direct solicitation or distribution.
So how do you place limits if they're not defined here? In my mind, you have to have a meeting about that particular thing and then decide what guideline or limit, whether that's acceptable or not acceptable. Otherwise, you need, this is bad policy and you need to define what the limitations are and then it's clear cut. I would agree with Lynn on this, where it seems like it's, it's advocating for a case-by-case basis where, where the, like, the jump rope, for instance, that, that was a bizarre thing that happened that just got kids feeding on kids and it just encouraged all the worst, the worst behavior you wanna see. And so we don't wanna eliminate every organization that comes forward that might be, you know, have a different model slightly or something like that, you know what I mean? And that would be a case-by-case kind of review, but I.
No direct solicitation of students or.
That's also okay in the net.
There's a piece of me that says, you know, if we, if you interpret this in another way, it kind of opens a Pandora's box, I don't know if you wanna.
I, I worry that the, the bullets one and two with no direct solicitation underlined and if no general class distribution underlined are part of the MGL that's referenced. It seems like those might be the things.
Oh.
So, I mean, I don't know, because, I mean, I can quickly look up MGL 4453A if you want.
Hold on that one and just do a quick check. Look into it.
Are you gonna look into it?
Yeah, I'd like to, I'd like to look into this a little bit further, this one.
Quick reader, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's weird.
Take for MGL.
Good catches.
That's why they took me off.
That's why they took you off. No, that's why you get to review all the documents.
Yeah.
Okay. Are we good on K?
Do you wanna improve this inform or do you want me to need it all up and then come back for?
Go to that question, though, about the advertising piece? Policy, cause I had had the question and I'd asked Dorothy, and she said, oh, actually, you know, I'm not really sure. This might kind of be something that needs to go to, you know, administration if we adopt this, this policy on advertising in schools. I said, you know, the, the school lunch menus are often branded and they say things like, you know, whatever, Tyson Chicken Nuggets. And does that then seem as, as though it's advertising and, and, you know? But the other argument is that potentially that's there because it allows parents of children with allergies to be able to look that information up and know when my kid is eating Chicken Nuggets, they are specifically eating this brand and I know where to find that information. And that was a question I didn't know the answer to and really, I think, needs to go probably to, you know, food services. Is that why it's there? Is there another mechanism for parents of children with allergies to find exact ingredients? Whether we brand it or not? And does, would our school lunch menus then sort of violate this policy if we adopted it?
It's, I'm sorry, that's totally not for food allergy awareness because you could have stuff that's sold through Cisco or whatever that's made by Tyson, completely different ingredients and formula for what's commercially available as, say, Chicken Nuggets in the grocery store. So if they go and they look at that stuff in the grocery store, they could be looking at the wrong information that's in there. I think that's just pure advertising and the, and the trade-off is we get free menu or whatever that, that's put together, just like, you know, a sub shop's gonna get Coca-Cola. We'll give them a free menu if you put the Coca-Cola sign up there. You know, it's kind of the same thing. And, and Tom actually came in and explained that in the past, that, that was the rationale.
I don't, I, you know, if we're looking for people's opinions, I don't like that. And I think if I have a child with a life-threatening allergy, it doesn't matter what the name of the brand is, I'm gonna be looking at it and I'm gonna be contacting and I'm gonna be calling because it's so, so serious. So, I mean, just, I mean, unless there's some legal reason or unless others have another opinion, I'd say just don't allow any branding.
No. You take the word, but does that do news?
Right, but that's the other question. Is, does that affect the, you know, do we get some kind of discount because of that?
I, I don't know, to be honest with you, but let me, let me check with Tom.
We just didn't wanna recommend, you know, it's, we didn't have that policy before, that was a mask policy. It seemed reasonable, but we wanted to verify that that wasn't, you know, there wasn't a reason for that that we didn't know about.
That's good.
The nice thing about the MASC policies is they're so thoroughly vetted. By the time they come here, like, you know, there's rationale why they've done what they've done. But like in our case tonight, we're just curious, why was that there? Why are those words there? So I'm very comfortable to chat with Tom on that too.
And we've tried to be very thoughtful about, like, when we have policies that don't match about, and we don't always lean towards the mask ones, but when there's, there are policies that are missing, without going through mask general law or legal references, it's hard to know, did mask come up with the policy for that reason? And so should we then have it? And we do, some of that, sometimes that comes up in discussion with Dorothy, but it doesn't always. Sometimes it just makes sense to have a policy.
So how does this fit in with, and I'm just gonna bring this up and I hope I'm not ruining this, but, but it does. So Florence Soya, for instance, has the virtual backpack that gets put together. And there will be organizations or whatever, it could be a portrait studio or it could be like somebody who does ceramic painting or something like that and they're having a class for the kids on Saturday. Sometimes that stuff works its way into, you know, the backpack, like, and it's a great thing for parents to know about as far as what can we do this Saturday? We've got this going on or that. Or it might be advertising, Hudson may be having a street fair and it may, they may have asked that, right? So where does that start and stop? You know what I mean? Cause if that, if that says it, then the school committee should be approving every little bit of literature that's going into that virtual backpack in that regard. And that just seems like it's a can of.
Well, like a street fair, I don't, the street fair is not getting money. It's the vendors at the street fair, so that one I'm good with. But, but your point is well taken, if it's one of those, you know, come and you, you paint places.
Right.
And I don't know that that's appropriate for it to be a school sponsored. I don't know.
There's also, you know, learning organizations, like tutoring organizations and so forth that have found their way through the district or things.
Yeah, I don't think we can do that, Kathy.
I think, and I don't know that this district has a policy, but in other districts I've worked in, anything that went home to the kids had to be related to the community. There was no, and you, you'd get people who would want to advertise this lesson and that lesson and tutoring services and things like that. And it got vetted through the central office and it would, it helped the principals out because they didn't have to say no. So we would say no, but if there was a community event, that would go in. If the Girl Scouts were doing something, that would go in. So, but not, you know, people who want to advertise their summer camp.
Their businesses.
Yes, exactly. Because then who do you say no to?
So then take fundraising out.
What?
But I, I think a lot of this, if you look at where, like, we are going back to this, this policy KH A, you know, where we should put limitations, where the school committee will place limitations on commercial activities and fundraising activities. You know, it sets up these guide rails, obviously, of providing, you know, protection from exploitation. But in number two, should not give the public the impression of generally endorsing or sanctioning commercial or fundraising activities. And I think that is where, you know, you do have to make the judgment call and, you know, but there are, you know, I have to, I work for a nonprofit and so I constantly have to worry about this. I'm sharing resources sometimes, but I have to be very careful about not making it sound like I am.
Endorsing.
Endorsing this particular product. I'm saying, here are some examples of some things that might be useful for your school, but I am in no way telling you which thing you should buy because that would be violating a lot of my ethics for my organization. But I think it's the same kind of idea. We do not ever wanna give, and if it's tutoring service, then it seems like, well, is the school recommending this tutoring service?
And why do kids in that school system need tutors? Why are the teachers doing the job?
Well, it's not even just that, but we have fundraising that's listed in here. And so you brought up Girl Scouts, so they have a car wash and they're advertising a car wash. That's fundraising. And I know, I'm not trying to, do you know what I mean? Change it, take fundraising out. If you're gonna make the policy, make it a good policy, not policy that is, well, what if and this, that, you know? I mean, it's just.
And to be honest with you, we've dealt with quite a bit of that. This very thing that you're talking about over the last two years. In fact, the last two months, that I can, I can think of very specifics. I would agree, you know, making this.
So where are we with this?
Wanna pull out KH A and then the other one, the other.
KB.
KH B.
The one right after it. KH A and.
KH B.
The one about.
KH B is the Chicken Nuggets one.
Yeah, that's Chicken Nuggets.
KH B.
KH B.
The Chicken Nuggets policy.
Public solicitation in the school, that's KH A. And then the next one after that is advertising in the school, is that the public? Yeah, so I think we need to look a little bit more.
It does say it may, we may grant permission for advertising of commercial products under guidelines or regulations we may approve. That's the percentage.
I think we have to. I think we have to leave that open, 'cause I'm sure there's organizations that are striving-
That's what I'm saying. So, there, there's your, we can say, sure, Tyson can sell our menus, 'cause we get a discount or whatever, if, if that's, if-
You can say, but you must say. That's, that's the difference, is, so if it says you can say in there, it means that you must say.
Yes, no, I know, that's not, I'm just saying that.
Which-
No, may is must.
May is, I can see.
May is must.
May might must.
Nope.
May is must.
Shell is must.
No, shell is must.
I know, this isn't fun for you folks, but it's really important, because we have such glaring memes.
I don't think we should move forward with approval in any form of this section.
Yeah, I, I think we should go back.
So, the KH, so what, what would you guys like me to do with K? I know KHA, I'm gonna check on the MGL, um, for it, if our president already.
It's a huge section, mostly about accepting gifts by municipalities and districts.
Yeah, accepting gifts. That, that is noted in the, but I wonder if there's something else about-
Requires study or speech.
The distribution and the solicitation. There must be something in there. Um, and then, check with Dorothy about that, and then, right, I guess?
I'm, I'm gonna call my co-
He's gonna call the attorney.
You're gonna call him on KB, right?
Yeah.
And, and KHB?
I'm gonna check on those three.
All three, yeah.
Ken, I wonder, can you say a few words about the kind of interaction you've had to have to deal with in the last few months? Is there a brief summary that you can say?
Well, sure, I can give an example. I mean, you can have, for example, somebody that's trying to run a, a side business, that's, you know, it's, I see it as an exploitation of a market that they have access to, that they should, yeah, that they should not, and, and we're, I would say that we're dealing quite stridently with some of that. And, I mean, we've had that happen in the last couple of weeks, but we've also had it happen in the last couple of years. Like, since I've been here, we've had several cases of that kind of thing happening. So-
Yeah, we need to look into that with Mike.
And then, ask them, you're talking about people coming to you asking to advertise within the school, but they talk here about, um, on KHB, about free teaching aids that come with commercially sponsored stuff and advertisements. What do you do with those?
We've shied away from that kind of thing, too, I would tell you. I've got some examples that I'm not prepared to give around the table, but we've had examples of that as well happen. So, this is all real, like, real things.
We need to look at this one, because it says that we can use them.
That's the KHB? She's gonna talk, she's gonna talk to Mike about that one, anyway.
And there's nothing that says we have to adopt those?
Not that we don't have to.
It's more-
But I think we should have an advertising in the school's policy, because, for the reasons superintendent said, which is-
But I agree with Neil, it should be very, yeah.
Yeah.
Maybe more specific.
Yeah, specific. What is, what is it, right? Okay.
Should we move on to L?
Yeah, that was good. Sure.
Uh, okay, so for L, um, we recommended elimination of LA ed agency relations, um, because it seemed unnecessary to us, because its purpose is carried out in LB, um, relations with other schools and school districts. And that sort of spoke, from what we could tell, and we did sort of, we had a lengthier discussion, I wouldn't call it necessarily lengthy, but, about, um, like, the ed collaboratives and the difference between the ed agencies plus, and, and the other schools, so what, what, what kinds of organizations fall under that. So, um, so that was our final recommendation, was we felt like that was covered under LB. For LBC, um, there's a compliance with state law for the, with the mask policy, so we, um, that we didn't have, so relations with, um, non-public schools. And Dorothy basically said that was non, without checking, which legal said it's non-negotiable, we should have that.
Non-negotiable?
Yeah.
And I will tell you that that was a hole that we, when I talked with the breadth and depth, this was another issue for us. I think that we've got a good plan in place right now, but, um, so, she's absolutely right, we have to have that.
Um, and then elimination of LBCA, um, which was a combination of both policy and procedure. Um, and the policy portion of it is, um, handled with the adoption of that LBC that Dorothy strongly recommended we adopt it. So, we did the procedure, there is a procedure in place in the district for the approval of private schools within, um, member towns. Um, and then for LDA, there was a bit of a language change in the fourth paragraph, um, so we added in, and just reference directly. So, it says the school administration, it did read, "The school administration will devise procedures for evaluating the performance of student teachers," um, but we recommend changing to, to, "The school administration will ensure there are procedures."
Mm-hmm, much better language.
And then, it, rather than fully replacing it with mask policy. Um, and our policy has a paragraph at the end that sort of is one of those, those, this is one of the, our policy hadn't been reviewed since the 2001. This is one of those old, old policies. It did have, and we kind of went back and forth, it has, ours has a, a paragraph we decided to keep in there about the superintendent approving internships and student teaching assignments for individuals that aren't associated with teacher training programs. So, I think the big push there, that's when I was certified, and I remember the big push was that, um, there are a lot of people leaving pri, the private sector and transitioning into education, and there was a big, um, I don't want to say push, but, and, people were encouraged to do so. So, I think that's probably why that language was in there, because this isn't a Shova policy, it wasn't a mask policy. So, we didn't feel like there was any harm in keeping it in there. And that way, if there was, like, maybe some reason where there was an administrative internship, yeah, that, yeah, that was that. Very straightforward, and, uh-oh.
No, no, that's fine, okay.
That's fine.
I had an exhale.
That was one of those, don't realize I'm in a public meeting size.
No, I have a, um, that, I mean, never would, we're talking about, and it would be the non-traditional route to education, and so, I took advantage of a couple of those, and it was not a good experience. I would rather have a sending institution to collaborate with.
But, but I, I don't know, are there, is there ever a case where there's, like, someone seeking an administrative license, where you would grant them an internship?
Yes.
Yeah, so that might be. It's, wouldn't be necessarily the teacher training program, which seemed like limiting to, yeah.
No, we've got a couple going on right now.
Yeah.
Yeah, we figured there was no reason to take it out, it didn't do any harm, and-
Well, and it gives, it gives a control to the superintendent, which is what, where we want anything teaching-related to be. Lynn?
Um, LDA, student teaching and internships, um, I'm not sure if this is the end yet, but are they required to be core or being projected?
That, that's an overarching, that's covered in another section, all right? Anybody who goes-
As long as it's somewhere in there. And then LBC.
LB, as in boy?
LB is in, what's relation? Relations with non-public schools. I know it's public school, but you're looking at private schools and we're approving them, and show why?
Yes.
No, that's law, state law.
It's state law, and, yeah, and we, and that's absolutely part of the work that we're working.
And you do that because?
It's statute, I mean-
Oh, no, I get that, but what's, what's the purpose of it?
Because we recognize that many work-related contributions are needed.
All right, so, well, no, no, it's private school, you know what I mean, I'm not gonna, I mean, parents is spending, spending a lot of money to send them there, so they're not gonna be bad schools.
It's evaluating, it's evaluating the, it's still, they're within the state of Massachusetts, so I think that's probably what it is, but I do know that even with our former superintendent, it was like, he was out a lot, every year he would do the rounds, right?
Yeah. I think, I don't know if this is what you're asking, but I, I think that, um, you know, when kids leave the public school, go to private school, I think it's the expectation that when they return, if they choose to, to come back, that they've had the same level of, yeah.
That's what I was thinking. So, why aren't we checking charter schools?
They're already public schools regulated.
Yeah, public, but they're-
And not private schools.
But their charter is to share, so you would go to them. I mean, I don't know why you wouldn't, but-
They're a public school, actually.
Yeah, definitely. So, what do you follow?
What?
I'm just wondering if we take the time to look at private schools, why we're not taking a look at the charter and the public schools?
That's not, that's not us. That's the state.
It is the state.
So, that's a responsibility, state to check with the private schools? So, the state put that on you?
Yes, yeah.
Another unfounded-
I thought you were just doing that to make sure that if they transferred back here, that we're up to par.
Yeah, no, the state statute on it.
Wow, all right.
And is that being delegated? I mean, I re-assess committee, but we've never really seen more than a report, right?
Yeah, we, and, I was just saying, Lorraine, it's one of the things, again, when we talk with the breadth and depth, it's one of the areas that we've spent some time working on. And actually, our, uh, Teaching and Learning Unit helps to support the work in that area, and helped to create the process.
So, in L, what do you mean B? This sounds to me like it's referred to like the collaborative type thing, right?
LB.
LB?
Yep. The, the, yeah, so, yes, that, I mentioned, so the agency in LA that is, that we're, so we're eliminating LA-
LA, yeah.
Because it's carried out, the, it seemed unnecessary to us, it's carried out in LB, and the agency that's referred to in the title of LA are, would be something like a collaborative. That's, that's the decision that we had.
No, no, that makes sense.
And so, the only I was wondering was, um, our policy is to keep, try to keep the kids here. So, would you want to mention that, or we're just saying, okay, this, we just, this is just to say that we've got these schools out there?
It's very different, it, it, you know, I don't think-
Because then you're gonna get into when and how and what situations, and then-
I don't think so. I think that, I would keep it simple.
Right.
Again, that's a thing. Mask policy, I would, I would leave it exactly as it is. And they've got the, actually, you can take a look at those mask general laws, but they've listed down below there.
That's all right, no, I'm fine. Yeah, I don't want, yeah, because I don't want anybody to say it's my age business, no. Um, okay. Are we good? Susan, Alix, and Steve, thank you. For, this stuff is dense and heavy, and thank you for, this is really critical work.
We can approve this in form, if there aren't any changes, unless you want, anyone wants one.
We can approve it in form.
We can approve L, yeah.
Well, let's do it.
I move, we approve, uh, policy Daniel, section L, in form.
Second.
All those in favor? Unanimous, thank you.
And then there's just that EFD.
All right, let's go to EFD.
Uh, it's, it's a mask policy, it's the meal charge policy.
This stuff would make me-
Yeah, exactly, yeah, yeah. So, I, I mean, it, it's what we needed to have, it, the sort, it was, it was just written in February of 2018, after federal regulations were finalized. So, um, I think it's pretty comprehensive. I don't know if anyone has any, that's the, the missing link from last meeting, or, the link didn't work to, so-
This is the meal charge policy?
Yeah.
I don't like it.
You don't like it? What don't you like?
I don't care for it either, but, right? Um, so-
It's funny. No, no, it's important.
No, I, I'm not here, so you guys, you guys have to deal with it, but this was, I mean, we figured out a couple of years ago, um, that there were fairly substantial amounts of money that went uncollected, um, and/or weren't tracked necessarily, um, right up through graduation. Um, some kids graduated, they walked, they did everything, and-
Not just related to meal charges, but everything, right? Textbooks?
Well, related to meal charges. It was, it was specifically affecting, you know, and, and the irony is, when it was researched, it was found that, um, it did not come down to socioeconomic status. Somebody who was, who was not, like, in dire straits, that was, or, you know, or in a situation, it was people that absolutely had the means, that just weren't paying it. And it cost the district a lot of money, and, and it's a way that, um, I, I just love to see the district have a better way of being able to recoup that money, um, from people that have the means.
So, what recommendations?
Uh, there's nothing that actually says, and I know in the past, um, there was talk, I don't know if it happened, about, um, you know, actually, uh, seeking judgment, um, against people that, that weren't paying. And I'm talking, this was thousands of dollars, you know what I mean?
See, it's, in all fairness, Neil, I think right now, I don't think we're in that position at all. Like, you know, just to give you an idea, I think it was, um, Tom Poole had reported out, um, just relatively recently, and saying, okay, here's where I am, and, and here we are in May. I mean, that's just, that's the, how we're doing our business now. And so, we saw staff, for example, that had some, you know, monies owed, and now, um, we're looking at students. In fact, we just had this discussion, like, days ago, like, two days ago, okay, let's collectively meet now and see where we're at, where we're at. But truthfully, that has been, our process has changed so dramatically on that, as a result, too, of having Leah down there right now. I mean, stuff's getting out to parents right away when larger amounts are starting to accumulate or whatever, and the invoices are sent out, reminders are sent out. I don't think we're nearly in the position right now that, I know what you're, I know what you're talking about, I, I absolutely understand that, but right now, I don't think we're nearly at that level.
And I applaud that, and I think, what is it, Mosaic? That, yeah, so, I, I know in the idea of taking, uh, credit cards and checks and so forth, right?
Yeah, it's all helps.
So, that's all fantastic things that allow the perpetual funding. And, and my point is, if something in that, um, in the policy is listed as such, that we've reserved the right legal action, um-
I don't think that that's, that's, I don't think that that's not an option.
I would have that spelled out personally, myself. And the reason, and, and I get what you're saying, it doesn't happen, and that's great, but it's there for the one or two that could come down the line that happens. If you don't have that coverage, you can't go back and say, here's what we're gonna do, you can't do it. So, it, it may exist, but we wouldn't actually use it a lot, because people are being great, and that's fantastic.
I think if you look at the, on the second page, the, that first line, the superintendent shall ensure that there are appropriate and effective collection procedures and internal controls. So, I think that might assuage your-
Well, no, I read that part, too. I, I just don't think it's draconian enough.
And it also, it also says that, yeah, if the, if, um, phone calls from food services don't result in payment, right before the refund section, the last sentence, yeah, so the food service manager can refer to the business office. And then, maybe you have a procedure in place where if that's the case, then it goes to a collections agency or something.
Right, and I'm just kind of going on the past, where that, a lot of that stuff was kind of sort of implied, too, also, but-
Right.
There wasn't a procedure, there wasn't, there wasn't protocol, you know, I mean-
But this should be policy, though, and not procedure and protocol.
That's my opinion.
It's, yeah, I mean, I-
But I, I, yeah, but I don't have the, the same level PTSD as some other people do. I know, I know, I get it, I get it, I get it, I do get it.
You get it and you respect it, you feel bad that they had to live through it.
I absolutely do.
Yep.
Yeah, but I, I think if we do add anything to this, we have to get legal counsel.
Legal counsel on it, too.
Because it says here that, you know, we'll do, the superintendent and the business office can do things that meet the requirement of the law, and that sort of covers you. But if we then start adding, if after 15 days, then we're gonna, you know, send you to an agency, or then we're gonna do this, all of that would make me very nervous.
I'm, 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 I'm honestly quite comfortable with the way that's written.
Me, too, but-
To be honest with you, I, I understand exactly what your concern is, I, I really do.
I don't care.
You do, you wanted to broaden it up. Does anyone have a burning issue with it?
I just wanted to-
At 8:07 PM on the live setting, thanks.
Policy, EFD, meal charge policy.
This is replacing, this is replacing a current policy, right? It's updated through the MASC process.
This is a brand-new mask policy, February 2018.
And we previously did not have a policy?
We had, we had, um, wait a second, oh, gosh.
I think we did. I'm satisfied with that, I just was checking.
But, but the recommendation was that we replace with this EFD. Let me get back to here.
Okay, I don't know what we're doing, but I know there's a motion on the floor, so I need a second, or it dies.
Second, second.
Dear God. All right. Any other discussion? Hold your-
I was talking over her, though, so you probably didn't hear, because I was right next to her.
Oh, Kathy moved to adopt-
EFD.
Inform policy, EFD, meal charge policy.
Second.
And we had a second floor mark, and we- And we are now ready to vote. All those in favor? It's unanimous. Thank you, Susan, thank you, policy. We are going to move on to old business, and I'm going to, I'm going to flip a couple pieces. So, the FY19 kindergarten model, that, so the reason this is on the agenda is because the school committee was contacted and by a couple of parents who had received a letter from, in this, is specific to the Stowe Center School. So, I want to make sure people understand that that agenda item is not across the district, it's specific to the school.
School.
Center School. And so, Ross, I always mess your last name up.
Mel Corrigan.
Mel Corrigan is here to share with us principle. So, I think what we need to understand is, when we were here in January, and you folks came forward and talked about the kindergarten program for FY19, how it was going to look and how it was going to be structured, and we were going to continue into FY19 dedicated part and full-time classes, and the letter itself referenced that this one particular class, so I'm going to let you go.
Sure.
Talk about it, and let me stop talking.
And actually, can I tee it up, too, just for a minute? A couple of things to keep in mind. Remember that this time of the school year, and those of you, you were all around the table last year, remember that we say we monitor the numbers, we monitor the, I think we say that just at every meeting. And so, these particular numbers are a little bit of an anomaly to the rest of the school district, what's happening at Center School right now. So, we've been monitoring these numbers for several months now, right now, and the numbers have actually gone down from where they were at. So, we didn't, this is not a class that gains numbers, this is a so-called class, as such, that continues to lose numbers. So, with that, then, Ross, let's just talk about what our thinking was, some of the discussions we had, and where we ultimately landed, why we landed, and why you sent the memo out when you did.
Sure, so, thank you for having me, so I could update you guys. The superintendent Clutchy speaks of anomaly, it's also an anomaly for Stowe. Traditionally, our numbers for the half-day requests are well into the teens from year to year. I think even my first year in Stowe, we may even have 20 students. We are currently at a point where we have seven students slated for the half-day program for kindergarten, for the parent requests. We did application for kindergarten back in December into January, and then that became full-fledged registration, which was also done online for the first time ever, so, you know, as typical for kindergarten, we have new families entering the town, but essentially, our numbers are holding where our half-day section requests are very low. So, if we, currently with seven students enrolled for, and registered for the half-day program next year, and a total of 71 students registered and anticipated for the full day, with our current, with what we have this year, with three full day and one half day, we would have a half-day section with seven students, and then we would have three full day sections with either 23 or 24 students in them. Meaning, if we gained five more additional full-day students, which we can anticipate that may happen with Stowe, over the summer, that would start to push our numbers at 25, which, if we're looking what's best for students educationally in their first year in kindergarten, we want to give them the best possible experience. So, to look at having three sections that are approaching, you know, right now, that are already 23, 24, which could possibly start to go over 25, and having seven, and even if we add a few, we're still at maybe 10 half-day students starting in September, I don't think that's what the best educational benefit for students is. So, looking at that situation, we talked about, what does that mean? What could we possibly do? And if going to the blended that was done before, or called the hybrid that was done before, then that would start to put students at sections of 19 or 20 for next year across four classrooms. Meaning that, and just to bring it back up, is that, that, under that model, students who are half-day leave a full-day classroom midday. It's been done in the past in the district, it's certainly been done in Stowe. We know it works, there's some scheduling conflicts and things like that. Is it the number one? Absolutely not. We do like the, the half-day, full-day separation to build community for those half-day students. However, looking at what's best educationally for the whole of the student body coming into enrollment in kindergarten, you think, you know, this is a much more feasible situation, which would put our, our four sections, that would be full classrooms, at 19 or 20 students to start, based on our numbers right now. If we gain five students over the summer, like I mentioned in the other model for full day, then we would still put sections at 21. So, we're still well within what's equitable across the district. And as a reference, our fifth, our first through fifth grade classrooms currently have between 19 and 22 students. So, we would still be within the range of what's expected for class size at Center School. And I know that we try to keep that somewhat equitable across the grade levels in the district, too. So, I think we would do it that way as well.
My concern, too, is if, if that number of seven continued to go down, because that has been the trend of that group right now, we could well be looking at a class of five, potentially, for example, come July 1st. And, you know, as I said to Sherwood Lorraine, that class of five, if we, if we ran with that half-day class of five, those children are pulled for services, too, so, you know, whether it's OT, PT, speech, or whatever. So, at any given point in time in those mornings, you might only have one or two children really, like, functioning in that. It just, at the end, made no sense, no matter how we looked at it. And so, we came back now to your point, I want to just emphasize, too, we, we don't support the notion of a hybrid model across the district, we just don't. But we have said, and Ross, you and I talked about that even just the other day, we did say we always are going to have to watch those numbers, because you may have a situation like we have this year. So, that's one of the reasons why we took the look back and said, okay, we'll, we'll look at doing that just for this one year.
Go ahead.
I was just saying, also looking at what other districts do for half-day kindergarten programs, they sometimes cluster students together in one particular school, and I don't think we'd want to do that either by moving students between communities. So, this allows us to start building a class of students, you know, that will be together and moving forward at Center School. I also let families have, incoming kindergarten family night is in a few weeks, I told them I'd update them with what our enrollment numbers are at that time, so they'll be hearing an update from me as well.
So, can you share that with the super committee, too, just since this, just let us know what everybody's updated enrollment numbers are at the point when y'all are sharing it with committees, because we don't necessarily see them. All right, one second. Anything else, sir? All right, I do, I'm going to take Lynn, but I do want to hear from the Stowe reps first, I think it's really important, you're elected here by the folks in your town, so, Lynn, go ahead.
I'm just wondering if, seeing, it's a little premature, because I know that what my kids were going through, a lot of parents would sign up for the full day so that they had the option, you know, and they wouldn't lose the option of the full day, and then they would transfer back all the later on. So, I don't know if they still do that, and, you know, what's going on, but then you also have, like, you have the kindergarten coming up, so, I mean, a lot could happen. So, if you say it's going to be hybrid, and then you get the numbers, can you go back to being the regular kindergarten type?
I think at this point that we've made a decision, I wouldn't, I mean, I think I'd want superintendent Clutchy to weigh in, that answers as well, but my opinion is, we've made a decision at this point, I, I want to stick it, stick with that decision, so we're not changing things again, especially when we're within three or four weeks, maybe having students in to meet their teachers, I, I wouldn't want to switch that back for students, so...
I think, and the trend right now in this particular group was just the opposite.
I know, I get that, I totally get that, but my, I'm having trouble with your statement that you don't want to change your mind.
I guess I have a follow-up question, was that back when the lottery was in place, though?
It was.
So, I'm wondering if parents at that point wanted to reserve their spot, I mean, we, at that point, I think they also took a deposit.
That makes sense.
On full-day tuition, so I think that may have been...
Have you taken deposits for...
No, we're not taking deposits at this point, as far as I can, I don't believe that we are, right? Right? No, we're not. That was something that was also taken away.
Because I think that when they have to stop paying, the numbers are going to go up. I, I don't want to take away the option that you could go back to a kindergarten, because I think when you start taking the payments, it might change.
Can you pick up the...
I think when people have to actually stop paying for kindergarten, the numbers by half-day might go up, because they're not taking deposits.
Is this the first year that deposits haven't been taken?
I don't believe so.
I think the hybrid, it wouldn't have been necessary.
And so, you didn't really lose numbers because you didn't have deposits, so I don't think that's going to make a difference.
Well, with the hybrid, it didn't matter.
Right, so the hybrid did have, I'm not a Stowe person.
Well, no, of course, the hybrid, you had...
Well, you had a conversation about her question, so it's okay.
Well, you had, in the hybrid, you had, you had the replacement, it didn't matter, everybody, everybody, they wanted full day, they got full day. So, there was no need really to do a deposit.
So, there were problems with the hybrid, that some parents had problems with the, with the hybrid, and it was done, and Florence Sawyer had that. Have you guys learned from that, like, what some of the issues were?
Socially, that's what I heard.
Right, so socially, and, and the argument is, I mean, Ross Smith, good argument, that there, you know, you don't want to put them all in...
One school.
One school.
Or move them out of their home town.
Because socially, that's not a good thing.
Right. Because we have considered that, we had that discussion.
And then you put them in, so they're in a group of three, and they're, and socially, that's not really great, because then they're coming to the schools, and they were in this little tiny class, and it's just like, bah!
But that's not even a class, that's like, that's not optimal educationally, I would assume, you want the kids watching each other.
That's a nest of three eggs in it. I mean, it's just, yeah, and so, so I get that social part, so I see, I see a very strong argument for the hybrid in this particular case, but I also get that whole rationale that, you know, I'd rather have my kid in there the entire day, so they're not missing out on something, or, or vice versa, you know?
Mark and Steve?
I would question, would all of the half-days be in the same classroom, or would they be spread across?
Yeah, he's spreading them across.
He's spreading them across?
Correct. In the past, it has been spread across equally. I, I think this year, again, we have that, the conversations with the teachers, when we start to build class lists, is that if our number is so low, what does that look like? I don't want to get into a situation where, you know, it's certainly one, and even two students in the classroom that are leaving half-day, what's the impact of that? We need to talk that through a little bit when we build those class lists.
Impact in the sense on the child or on the classroom population?
I think on the child in particular.
When you're the only one.
Right, leaving half-day, what does that, what does that mean for that student, so?
Yep.
And it's also nice that the, my three returning teachers are in retirement at kindergarten this year, but the three returning teachers have experience with this, so they know sort of the ins and outs of what they've done, when the numbers have been a little bit lower, or what that looks like, or they can certainly help have a lot of expertise in, in the building of the class list.
Okay. Non-Stowe people.
This is, I think this is more related to process, and I understand completely, you know, and it makes sense, the decision that you've arrived at. When I saw the letter originally, I, you know, I have to take the trip back down memory lane to refresh my memory, so I went back and I looked at the presentation from January, and then I went and I looked at the, the video of the meeting and that whole section when the principals presented. And I know that at that time, there was just, you know, I'm looking at current K application responses for FY19, and at that time, for half-day for Center was five, for Sawyer it was nine, and for MRE it was zero. And it was said repeatedly that these are early, but we should have a good sense of our hard numbers in March. And it was said that, the principals were asked for their recommendation for this year, for FY19, since FY18 was the first year of the separate classrooms. It was said that in March 2018, the principals report enrollment and any necessary changes with recommendations and follow-up. And that step didn't happen. And my concern is that the 11th-hour nature of getting this, and there's nothing we can do about it now, obviously, but I, I think that if, in the course of our readings and deliberations, that something like that is mentioned, or we're told we're going to get it, maybe we need to break out the calendar under March and put something in there, because I know that this is the only way to resolve it, I have no fault with that, but I just think the, what I consider to be, since we, we knew, or thought, or were told that we'd have harder, and maybe the outcome would be the same, but we would have had the heads up.
And so would the parents who are impacted.
Right, exactly. And, and maybe just a heads up, and then we'll be getting more information to you as we get further down the line. And it's just, you know, we're constantly looking at ways that we can improve what we do, and, you know, the communication with the parent thing, but I just, I, that's what struck out for me, because I wanted to see if anybody asked a question, I know we did, but what happens if you only get, you know, five kids? So, anyway, I just wanted to bring that up.
Yeah. So, just for my own clarification.
Yeah.
We're talking K right now.
Yeah.
Are you looking at that for, like, all grades?
Oh, no, 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 all I'm saying is that, in the K presentation, we told that, we'll come back, we'll come back in March, we'll update you in March, and it might not have changed anything, but we would have been, you know, given the heads up, and, you know...
What strikes me is, we, we knew that, and I remember the discussion even about the March date. Like, I remember having that discussion around our admin table, I'm not sure how we, I'm just saying, I'm not sure how we missed that. That's, that, because I remember the discussion happening at the, at the admin table.
But I think the expectation was, what came out of that, when I, when I went back and I looked to the tape, that was said that you guys would come back to us, and I guess probably...
No, you're right, I, I agree.
And it's just moving forward, because, you know, it makes sense to approach it in that way, and there's nothing we can, we can do about it, and even in March, if it was five, maybe that would have been the same, well, if, if the number stays at five or seven, this is what we're going to do, at least it's out there in the ether, and, you know, it's, it's not a surprise in May.
So, I, I'll go ahead, and then I have a question.
Do parents have the option, let's say their child is half-day, they're one of, you decide you're going to put one or two kids into the class, and that child really wants to go full day? And the parents agree, yeah, okay, that's, is that an option during the year that they could suddenly switch to full, to full day?
I believe they do now.
So, is that something that the parents are made aware of, that if they are half, in the half-day program at any point in time, they could opt to go full?
I believe the parents are aware of that, but we can certainly go back.
I'm just saying, to me, it's my point, but that would be important to me, that I would know that, just for, you know, my child's sake.
Because there's no more lottery.
And no, they can go to the...
Right, but that's, and that's exactly right, but that's, that's my point. So, if they're half, if they're half-day, though, and they decide, you know what, I just think, we'd be more comfortable with the full day, it's not as bad as we thought or whatever, and...
I, I think if Cindy Maxfield was sitting here right now, she would tell you that that's, that, that happens with some regularity across the district.
I can give you my N of one, as a former half-day kindergarten parent, that that was absolutely presented to us. They said, you know, we know you started out as half-day, but we think you're doing really great, and if you'd like, you always have the option to switch into full day. And that was, so that's just me, my one anecdote.
But that's, that's useful. So, so, I remember the discussions and the concerns about the blended. I really don't like the blended classroom, but I'm not an educator, admittedly. But it was, it was, why don't you like the blended classroom? One was social, that was my biggest concern. When the district moved to blended, it was like, I remember saying, you know, I'm the kid that's leading the classroom, and all my buds are there, and that doesn't feel right, that's like sadness, and yuck. And no, 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 it's fine, because, and I remember Cindy Maxfield saying, you know, we went and we saw, and it works great, and we brought a teacher, and I love it, and it's great, no, okay. But then the other concern was, and this was a big topic of discussion, it was front-loading all of the educational component in the blended classroom, and I know that there were some concerns about parents who were frustrated, their kids weren't getting the specials that they were promised, but I don't know how physically you could put all those specials in there, so I think we understand that piece. But the other thing is, so, what happens in the K classroom that's blended, are they, do they have the same curriculum and the structure of the day that the non-blended classrooms? Well, now that we don't know about that, but, okay, so, let me forget that piece, but I'm thinking as I'm talking, so it's working for me, and I hope it's working for you. But the other piece is, what are those kids doing the second half of the day, and how much intensity is it for them, those little teeny five-year-olds who have a half-day they've got to cram everything into?[1785.73] That worries me, because wouldn't we all like to be able to just let them run free outside for more time? I mean, I would rather them have more time to play. But go, talk, talk to me.
Sure.
Because I'm just spitting back to you the concerns I heard from across the district.
So, it is a concern, absolutely. So, to give you an idea of sort of the post-half-day life of a kindergartner who stays with a full day in this type of model. Now, in a half-day separate full day, it's different, because there aren't students leaving. We don't have to compact things or expand it up. So, currently, with the half-day classroom, things do have to get compressed. That child does not have the same amount of time in school as a full-day student. So, naturally, there's a discrepancy in the amount of time that they would have on learning. And learning at kindergarten means very different things than it may do, than it obviously does in third, fourth, and fifth grade. There's a social aspect, there's the play aspect, there's, you know, building just learning skills within a classroom setting, so it's different. So, under the blend of the hybrid, when those students leave half-day, the other students begin to go to lunch. And then there is a rest period. And near the end of day, there's also a free choice where they're working on, I mean, there's some academic stuff in there, but it's free play, it's working on social skills, the classroom teachers are there supporting that. The in-between time is when the teachers need to expand upon the curriculum that was taught in the morning. So, it may mean different things depending upon what the curriculum was. So, I do know that teachers in the past have said to me, in the morning, if they have a student who they need to do more work with, they may pull a group of those half-day students and do an extra piece with them, knowing in the afternoon they may have time to do it with the other students. And the classroom assistant is doing more supporting independent learning, which isn't really, at kindergarten, as efficient, but, so it's sort of a flip-flop of that timing.
So, my understanding is back to hybrid, the kids we have, they leave at, so that's what, 8:30, about 12?
Correct.
Okay, and then the rest of the school stays till 3:00. So, we're looking at 20 minutes for lunch, 45 minutes for rest, and 20 minutes for recess?
So, it's typically like a 10 or 15-minute recess for the students. And it's the same way right now in the afternoon, right? Rest time is about 20 minutes, and their lunch time is about half an hour.
Okay.
So, an hour and a half of the three hours that they've remained.
And when you have the regular day, I think that that's a shorter day, right? They don't leave at 12, do they, earlier?
No, they leave at 12.
Yeah, but if you were doing the half, if you had the two straight kindergarten classes, morning and afternoon, what time do they, they leave?
Like, this year.
This year.
Yeah, at least.
They're separate.
Right.
Right, so you, like, the other two towns, they're leaving a half an hour earlier. So, but the blended classes stay till 12?
No, all the classes currently stay till, I can speak for Stowe.
So, there's no afternoon class, it's just the morning class?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, so they do stay a little bit more than what's called, it's like a .54, I think, of a day. It's not a .5, there's an extension of it, yep.
Okay.
Elise, do you have something to add?
I think so, yeah. I have a few thoughts that I'm trying to decide whether I'm going to say first. I mean, so I assume, because we haven't heard anything about the other kindergarten in any of the other schools, that this is solely...
This is just, just, oh, just these few kids?
And so, everything in the other schools is, you know, what we'd expect it to be at this time, because obviously, we haven't seen any updates on enrollments, but it's sort of what we were, we would be expecting with the half-day. And, I mean, I agree with sort of what else has been said, that I completely understand why this is the solution when there's such a small half-day class, and why it needs to happen. But I also, you know, sort of feel and understand, both as a former half-day kindergarten parent, you know, and Lorraine's comments, that we heard when we switched back from the hybrid to this model, all the reasons why the hybrid was problematic. And I know that we're all aware of that. And it's, it's not the ideal solution this year. But I just sort of want to put it out there, that if this starts to become a pattern, where one year we're switching back, one year we're doing this, you know, or next year, we're seeing similar levels of low enrollment in half-day, that we really start to look at, what does that mean for how we do kindergarten?
Oh, I think we're going to be...
Yeah.
Because, you know, I mean, and that was, you know, it's stressful. I remember my, my son, when he was half-day, and we thought half-day would be better for him, because he's so little, and he, you know, and he would come home and be like, "Mommy, kindergarten is stressing me out." There's just, because he felt, he felt that lack of, "I'm leaving earlier than everybody else, and they can maybe finish their work after rest, and I can't." And his, you know, his teacher was wonderful, and was like, "No, no, no, it's, you're okay, you're fine." But he internalized that of like, "I go home earlier, and I miss out on stuff, and maybe I need to finish my work." You know, it was his own. But I worry about the other little ones feeling that way, feeling, you know, that, as Lorraine said, they're so little.
Well, and they, and they are. And like I say, there was a while there that we said, "Do we run just a half-day class? Is that what we do?" But I'm just not, I'm just not sure that that's educationally sound. It's got nothing to do with the money, quite frankly. It never did. We never had money discussions on this. It was always, what was in the best interest for the children?
What's going to happen? So, let's play what-if. What's going to happen if you get five more kids who want to do half-day, but you've already committed to this blended classroom? And then, then does that mean, based on what I'm hearing, that we're not going to come away from the blended classroom in Stowe? Right? So, I know that this is a pain in the neck to you, and I really do respect the position that you're in, and I'm glad that it's you and not me. However, however, I, you know, it's just, we're, I feel like we're stepping backwards, you know? And we did, and I realize where you're at. I think it's unfortunate that we didn't, you know, that this kind of like happened, and I think that...
But even, even still, though, in all honesty, if, if we, we could go back to that, that part-time classroom and, and tight, and just wait and see, to your point, is that an option for us to consider? But then, my kids, my other concern, those, and those children don't start to belong. Do you know what I mean? Like...
What do you mean?
So, let's say that we decide, I'm not suggesting this, but let's say that we decided, okay, no, we're not going to do this, the hybrid model for this group this year. We're going to stick with a half-day kindergarten model, which we all support and feel is the better way to go. So, we're just going to hang back and see if we get five more kids, seven more kids. And so, we kind of hang back, and, and so, then we also have to make, then we would also have to make the decision on what we do with these bigger classes. Because, quite frankly, if I was a Stowe parent, I would not, I personally would not want my child in a class of 25 or 26 K kids.
Right.
So, then we would say right out of the gate, well, listen, push these seven kids off to the side right now. We're going to have to do something about this number anyway. So, we're going to come back and say, we're going to add another full-time teacher, because that's what we would have to do, another full-time teacher to break that 23, 24, 25, whatever the numbers are, into four classes. And we're still going to have these, right now, it's seven children hanging out here. Now, these kids will all be settled, because they're going to be all in classes, they'll be designated with teachers and such, and we're going to hang on to these seven children over here right now. Which, again, as much as it could go to five, it could also go to three. So, now we're in the month of May, like, late May, saying, okay, now, because those children aren't belonging anywhere.
I understand, I understand, I appreciate that.
I mean, that's an option.
I guess what I'm saying to you, though, is, no, but I, I think my question is, if you get 12 to 15 kids total in August, by the beginning of August, you've got 12 to 15 kids who want to be in a half-day class, are you still committed to the blended class in Stowe? And I think what I'm hearing is yes.
Well, again, I leave this to Ross for our, for broader discussion, but...
So, we have to be thoughtful in, in thinking about what the remaining full-day enrollment looks like.
I was just going to say, that's exactly what I was going to go.
Because if we do add students in, so I think like many communities, get move-ins over the summer.
Yep.
Right? I think most people are anticipating that they're moving or have their house on the market, with a student going to kindergarten or not enrolling their child. So, I think we have a good understanding. But if more students are moving in.
Yep.
And let's say it's even two students for half-day, per one student for full-day, we're still going to push our full-day numbers to 24, 25, 26, which would create the need for, what does that look like for those students? And if we add a section and then spread those students out, then we are now changing classrooms that were already established and thought about in May, in May, and met in June, and have been doing playgroups over the summer. And that's not what I want from our community of incoming kindergarten students and parents, is to change things last minute on them.
Okay, but you understand, I got to ask the questions, because I just absolutely abhor that, I just, the social aspect of it. I understand that. So, thank you for that.
I have one more what-if question, sorry. I like playing what-if, too. To go to the opposite end of Lorraine's what-if question, what if, you know, as I had the option to do with my son, you say, you know, "You can switch to full-day if you want." And three parents say, "Yeah, sure." And so, now you've got two half-day kids, or one half-day kid left in Stowe. At what point do we, you know, does that, and we may not have to make that decision this year, but at what point does that then become like, well, we've only got one kid that's leaving earlier, you know, out of an entire kindergarten class? Or two, or three? You know, right now, five is already pretty small, especially if you spread them out. But what if it gets down to three or two? If that really becomes, why is that kid in the car, like?
Yeah.
No one else does.
And you're targeting that poor little punk.
What if you've got kids that are full-day, and they're like, they're only a 15-year-old, and they're two tires? Can they go back? And now you've got kids in the half-day, and the options won't play?
I mean, I...
Right, so then this is morphing into, do we have a required full-day kindergarten?
Well, I'll tell you what, that's what I was just about to say, is it's pretty clear that our, you know, hopefully, the drama of all the big crisis stuffs that has to get taken care of, the friends are going to, can be kind of like, we're done, right? Like, we're done. Because I think this year, and I've talked to Superintendent Clancy about it, and she's indicated they're going to be doing some analysis over the year, to really, truly look at, what does full-day K mean? What does it mean educationally? What does it mean?
Fiscally?
Financially? What does it mean to our communities? And that discussion will be generated from the administration, not from the school committee, not to the parent community, from the parent community. But it definitely, definitely will be presented to the school committee, to the parent community, and we will have those discussions. I think we're at that point now. I think we're at that point.
I think, I think there's value, I mean, in both what Lynn and Elise were saying, though, like, when do you stop? Like, when does it stop?
Right.
Right? And I think our thinking, and Ross, correct me if, you know, if I'm so beyond what, our thinking is, we want to let those parents know sooner than later, which is why, when Ross crafted the response, he said, "I want the parents to know right now what we're thinking."
I think Ross was, Ross did the, I mean, obviously, Ross did the right thing. He let his parents know. I think the concern was that the school committee wasn't made aware, and we weren't sure what was happening, because we're getting contacted. So, I think that, you know, nobody has concerns about what you did and what you needed to do to take care of your community. I think it was just, we don't know what's happening, and we're getting phone calls, so, Steve?
Do we have at least temporary numbers for the other three locations? The other two locations?
I don't, I mean, they're certainly out there. I don't know if we've got instant access to that right now, but do we know them? Yes, because we've been monitoring all the numbers all along. But there's...
I don't want to quote numbers, but I do know that they are within the, from the conversations that I've had, you know, in the same room with Superintendent Clancy and the other two principals, that they, what they're saying for numbers sustains the separate full-day and half-day from their perspective. I can't speak for them, but that's...
They can sustain both?
Yes.
Right, separate full-day classrooms, and a separate half-day class.
Which is historically different. Which is historically different. It's usually Stowe that is the high numbers.
You know, Stowe always had the higher half-day, because I remember the survey a couple of years ago, the Stowe had the half-day, and the full-day was here.
I think it was 21, my first year in the district. We had 21 half-day students, and now we're looking at seven. Very different.
All right, so I think that's good, and I really appreciate that you stuck it out this long.
Thanks for, thanks for having me.
A quick meeting, and you got kind of...
I'm good.
Thank you.
I'm good.
Good luck through the end of the year.
Thank you. Thank you for the support.
Great. Budget and warrant, oh lordy. You've got some subcommittee recommended reports for us, and thank you for taking this back and doing a little bit more on it.
And we are going to whiz through this thing?
Yeah, right. Neil's directing this, so let's see.
The flyers will burn.
What do you got?
So, all right, so we went back, and we talked about this today. So, you want me to combine my, why don't I just combine both the readout and today?
That's fine.
So, this is pretty much what we did for the meeting. And then we approved all the outstanding minutes that we have.
Yeah!
Including, we finished writing the minutes at the end of the meeting and approved the ones that we just had. So, nothing has gotten through. Put a bow on it. And then we just debriefed over the, you know, how the town meetings and the budget passing went and so forth. All right, so that's done. Now, we've got B&amp;W Subcommittee Recommended Reports. I would recommend that if we accept this, that we make two votes. That we vote to accept this process, and then we vote to actually have this placed in the handbook. So, it becomes a place that's permanent, it doesn't lose its relevancy, and it creates a framework that other school committees can work with, modify, change if they want, but they can work with instead of having to reinvent the wheel. The key thing is, we identified these eight subject matters that would require report-outs. The contents of those reports, we imagine would change based upon, you know, whatever the flavor of the month is for that particular year.
Yep.
And so, we put together what we've been working with, and what we felt were the best, you know, the best components of those reports. I'm not going to go through all the components, because they could change next year, when you guys take another vote or whatnot. But we did make a couple of changes from what we had out there before. You know, we just, we broke out pupil services, for instance, to include, you know, the Kenny Vento, grants, number of 504 plans, ELL enrollment, and a key thing, social-emotional learning update to come in with that particular report. We also brought, and I thought this was a big one, was the, we added a little thing first on the towns. So, also notation for separate town-owned property requests that we're looking to have included, so that those have, those kind of fall by the wayside.
Where is that?
That's under our facilities report and capital projects.
Yes, I can write it.
But, so, second line, and capital purchase along with notations for separate requests for town-owned buildings. And that's something the towns are always asking for and so forth. So, we have that put-together report that's out there. It's very easily answered for the capital planning groups. So, last thing, and I want to point this out, digital learning report. We didn't have this last week on there, but we put this on because digital learning's become a key component for, you know, next year and the future. We've hired the Assistant Superintendent, which is going to be heading up this, this process along with teacher and learning. So, I thought it was really important, we felt, that digital learning become a report-out. And not just, you know, hey, what are you doing? But the defined, like, so in other words, I will read this one. The report will include overarching goals, programs, and their associated goals, professional development, strategies for differentiation, and how progress will be measured with regard to improving student learning. And then, we're doing that at the beginning of the year, so that would be, okay, here's what we're going to be doing for this year. Then we're circling back, and we're going to have an end-of-year report on this. And this report will include an evaluation of progress toward the goals, as well as data that shows impact on student learning, including like disaggregated data reflecting performance on student subgroups. And I personally would have an expectation that not progress toward goals, but if these goals are put forward in digital learning in September, that those goals are met in June. Otherwise, they weren't planned properly.
So, how does...
That's the way that I would...
So, here's my question, because that sounds more like goal-setting and evaluation of performance for the year than it is a report.
No, it's, it's not. So, the way that we've been meeting with the digital, the digital learning component, that's all this was talked about, right? So, we talked about the SAMR models, we talked about what we're putting together. And so, those, those defined aspects of what are the goals for this program? We're investing, you know, hundreds of thousands of dollars, and the hundreds of thousands of dollars that are being invested, you need to substantiate those. So, what, I mean, these, these are just, these are hardcore facts that people can work with, like, what is being done?
So, okay. So, from the administration's perspective of these reports, is there anything in here that you're not currently doing that you need to create?
No, I don't think so.
Except that digital thing.
Yeah, I have a question about the digital learning.
Yep.
So, so the goals are, I think it's great to have, are valuable to have those goals and the PD and the strategies for differentiation. Who, so individual teachers will be measuring the progress and then...
Well, no, there's, there's actually a role now in the district that'll be filled next year, that will be fleshing all of that out with teaching and learning. And how is it going to be measured? But it needs to be a standardized way.
But ultimately, it's going to have to start in the classroom.
Well, for the, right, but that's going to funnel up to the administration and then the administration's going to report out based on that. So they're creating the protocol. So the first year, is this, this position is being put in place, those, those guidelines, so that model's going to have to be created to be able to, you know, support the report-outs.
But you're looking at, you're looking at the budget side, so they have a...
Totally the budget side.
They have a budget and are they doing what, they spent the money, are they doing what they said they were going to do and will they get to?
That's exactly right.
Not...
That's not a...
Not the classroom.
Okay. So I, I have to take this back, I did not see this goal. I, I, so I think this was, is this a new goal?
We put that in towards the, the end of our meeting. You know, we said we had nothing else left to do?
Yeah.
Yeah, we did that.
Okay, so I, so I want to, I just want to go back and say, actually, I saw all of this, except for that last piece, so I, I was not aware of that last piece. And yes, that would be something completely new that we've never done before.
Right.
And...
Well, it's a position that hasn't been, and it's not really the position, but it's the digital learning component.
Yeah, I, I understand it, but I don't, I don't see it at, I don't want to be negative, but I don't see it at all in the same types of fiscal reports that, that is everywhere else here. I think I understand the, the thrust behind it, but I, I don't know if I, if, I'm not really keen on that particular report, in this particular placement of it. I'm not saying that there shouldn't be something that happens though, I want to be clear on that, because I think that there should be. I just am not sure that that belongs here with the fiscal component with B&amp;W, if that's what.
So, I would make a motion, and we can talk about this, but I would make a motion that we accept the report, except for items number one through seven, striking number eight, which you guys can talk about next year if you want to.
Excuse me.
So we can...
Actually, no, I need to know where OPEP is.
OPEP would be...
That comes in the audit, in the annual audit.
That would be in the annual audit.
And we do also have, don't we have...
So we don't monitor her at all?
Why would you monitor it? You've hired...
The person that, there's one person monitoring OPEP for us the month of...
The treasurer.
So she never reports out to us?
She does, she's supposed to report out to us once a year.
Once a year. There's a treasurer's report and then the audit report will give the OPEP, you know, so you can ask all your questions when she, so when Vicki reports out, you know, you want to ask, where's your money invested? Can you get a prospectus or whatever? You can ask for all that information and she'll...
Tell us how we perform and...
Yeah, and she'll get, she'll get that info, but then it's audited on top of that and reported out. And that doesn't have to do with any report that's in here, that's just a requirement of the treasurer.
Okay. And it comes through the annual audit?
Right.
Because you know how every year, when the auditor comes, they talk about, they beat us up about OPEP?
Oh yeah. No, no, I get that, but they just, no, I knew it was going to be like also, because all we do is beat us up, so you don't have one.
But now we do.
Now we do.
And we're moving on.
Okay.
All right, any other questions? There's a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor? Unanimous? Thank you, budget and warrant, thank you for your efforts.
Yep.
All right, moving on, we do not have any subcommittee reports. Correspondence, anything of note?
Did you want to put this in the handbook?
I think the...
Oh, we have to do another vote to put this on the, so I would make a motion that we put the...
Recommitted reports.
That we put the budget and warrant, subcommittee recommended reports in, items number one through seven in the school committee handbook.
As a regular item.
As a regular item.
And all those in favor? It's unanimous, thank you very much for tying that up in a pretty bow. Consent agenda, meeting minutes of April 25, 2018, warrants of May 11, 2018, assuming we're good to go there. Okay, items for next agenda. All righty. We have, by then, we'll have our new school committee folks in place, we'll have our reorganization. We will be talking about the 2018, our FY19 school committee meeting calendar, and at that point, we'll be talking about, do we keep Wednesday nights for our meetings, but we'll wait for, to hear from those folks, for, from all of us rather. The business manager appointment, procurement officer appointment, the treasurer's report, Lynn, is coming at the next meeting.
Okay.
And emergency response task force committee update, that's district, the Chromebook repair and maintenance plan, Lynn, that's yours too.
Thank you.
Yep, and, and we're actually going to be holding our meeting at the Center School in Stowe, because before our meeting, we will also be holding our communication forum for our staff, those who are interested. Okay, that's a lot going on in the next meeting. And otherwise, pardon?
Yes.
The roundtables.
Yep, the roundtables.
What time do they start? Are they showing how to...
So...
It's four o'clock.
Probably four o'clock.
Okay. And I want to touch base on the communication forum for those, for those of you who, this is your first time, so Alita has organized this whole thing for us and we understand that there are folks from across the district...
Sadly, no, but that wasn't too...
What are we doing?
Sorry.
There are folks from across the district who are participating in this, and they sit, we sit at a table with a group of staff, and we all ask the same questions, but we're trying to get feedback, how are things going? But it's really more of, what can we do? What can the school committee do to help? So it's really a listening session and a feedback session. And you're taking notes, not people's names, but you're taking notes about things that they'd like to share with us. And then once that's done, all of that information, type it up, send it to Alita, she compiles it into one document, we look at it and it helps to formulate discussion points and things we're going to look at for the, for the next year's goals.
Have they been mentioned?
Oh yes.
Yeah.
Several reminders have gone out, regular reminders. Our principals have brought it up, it are all their staff names.
We may, oh, we may be doing one with principals and then only, but I'll leave that to you. Right? Okay.
So you...
Susan, what?
I had written down communication forum before for staff, but you're saying that we're expected to attend as well?
Well, we, we are the ones that are listening to them. If you can't make it, then that's okay.
Not now.
That's okay, because we could just collapse the groups, right?
No, there's no that.
Okay. So don't worry about it, that's fine. Okay.
My work's good.
And then the, the agenda will be up online. Okay. So, other than that, we've got two executive sessions tonight. The first one, we'll read that off, we're going to read both of them. We won't be reconvening between the two sessions, we're going to reconvene into open session at the conclusion of the second session. Speaking of those.
Okay, so I move that we adjourn the regular school committee meeting and enter in executive session pursuant to MGL 30A, Chapter 21A7, to comply with or act under the authority of any general or special law or federal grant and aid requirements. Review of executive session minutes of May 24, 2017, June 28, 2017, September 27, 2017, January 3, 2018, February 14, 2018, March 28, 2018, and April 11, 2017, accordance with open meeting law, MGL Chapter 30A, Section 22FG. Also, pursuant to aforesaid sections of MGL, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel, or to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-union personnel, the superintendent of schools. And we will reconvene into open session at the inclusion of the second executive session.
Are we inviting anybody?
We're inviting Superintendent Clenchey.
To include Superintendent Clenchey.
Yep. Okay, that was fun, thank you. Second. And Steve, and now we roll call, Susan?
Yes.
And Steve?
Yes.
And Marcus? Lorraine, yes?
Kathy?
Yes.
Lynn?
Yep.
And Elise?
Yes.
And you?
Yes.
Yes, thank you. All right.